Happy Holidays! I am Rabbi Cantor Dee Dee Thomas from Temple of Man. You're about to see a clip from a Hanukkah candle lighting service from a prior year. Unfortunately, we're not able to gather together this year due to COVID. Hopefully, you're staying safe at home. Hanukkah comes in the month of Kislev, which is considered to be one of the darkest months of the year. But at the same time, it's a month where we can manifest miracle. Miracle, due to the light that we are able to manifest with our own being, with the kindling of light of the Hanukkah. It is meant to remind us that when we have great dark opposing forces, when we have things in nature and life and things that are against us that seem insurmountable, that we are able to overcome. We're able to overcome because we have the ability within ourselves, the ability when we can gather together to fight unseen obstacles, as we are doing even now with COVID and with this pandemic, that we are mightier together than we are apart. So let us remember as we stay safe at home that we're doing this because we want to help each other. And even as the holidays are fast approaching upon us, and as difficult as that might be, know that we are in this together as one family of brothers and sisters sharing this planet, and that this too shall pass, and that we will get on the other side of it. And that hopefully, it is going to be our fervent prayer that the light and the love that is so manifest at this time of the year will get us through this dark period. And the miracle and light of the Hanukkah Festival of Light, the Hanukkah season, and the holiday season that is here for all of us, will shine a light upon the world and uplift us all, so that we can get to the spring and the summer, and yes, to this season next year, and hold hands and sing and celebrate once again with joy and in good health. Happy Hanukkah, happy holidays!
Good evening, everyone!
Good evening!
I'm Mayor Pat Fury. With us tonight is Councilman Jeff Rizzo, Councilmember Mike Griffith, and Councilmember George Chen. This is the official 2019 Torrance Hanukkah Ceremony, and it wouldn't be a Hanukkah ceremony without our Rabbi, Dee Dee Thomas. I'll turn it over to Dee Dee.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. And it wouldn't be Hanukkah without the City Council, everybody showing up, and all of you, and our songbirds, and our Hanukkah. So we do want to explain a little bit, so you know how it works. This is the shamash, this is the helper candle. And the difference between a regular menorah and a Hanukkah is the fact that there are, instead of seven branches, there are nine. So how many nights of Hanukkah are there?
Eight.
Eight. So we have eight candles for the eight nights, and one, the ninth one, is the helper, the shamash. And so when we put the candles in, we normally put them in right to left, and then we light them left to right. So we are actually going to, we were saying it this way, but actually, your right is over here. So we're going to take the shamash and we're going to light it left to right. So they go right to left when you place them, so first night, second night, third, fourth, and so on, the way we read Hebrew, and then you light them left to right. And the mayor is an old hand at this, he's been doing this now for a few years, so he's very interfaith oriented with all denominations of humanity and being. So we have song sheets, does everybody have a song sheet that we've cast out? So we're going to start with the Hanukkah candle blessings. And let's first read, let's have a, how about, would the council like to come over here? I believe the microphone is right here. Would you like, Mayor, you want to lead? Lead it in English, and then we'll do it in the Hebrew. So come forth right here. Okay.
All right.
Gather around, you can read the English. So blessed are you...
Blessed are you, Lord our God, sovereign of the universe, who has kept us alive and sustained us and enabled us to reach this moment.
Next one.
Blessed are you, Lord our God, ruler of the universe, who has sacrificed us with your commandments and has commanded us to kindle lights of Hanukkah. Blessed are you, Lord our God, ruler of the universe, who wrought miracles for our fathers and mothers in the days of old at this season.
So Mayor, if you'd like to be careful with the cord, and step over on that side. So we're all going to sing it in the Hebrew, and it's important to note that this is a Festival of Light. December, the month of Kislev, is considered the darkest month of the year. So there's darkness in our world, and there's dark things that happen to us in our lives, and we have to have the fortitude and the drive, like the Maccabees, to go forth and be, even if we're a small group, to be strong and mighty and persevere and overcome. Overcome the darkness that is ever-present in our lives and our humanity and in our world. So, and if you have cell phones, please, you can turn them off unless we're calling God, which is what we are all doing at this moment, to bring on the light. Because we kindle light here today in our beautiful City Hall chambers, where they try to bring light to our city and keep us safe and make decisions that help elevate us all. And together, we, it is said when we have a minyan, a group of ten or more, we are manifesting energy. And so we, together, doing these prayers, lighting the light, kindling the light, in this festival and season of miracles and light, we're hopefully bringing light to all the world. Light to our relationships and kindling the light which is within our own being, our own spirit, to carry us forward until the next Hanukkah, when we have that Festival of Light. So Mayor, you have to just go ahead and turn the light on that shamash, and then go the first, second one, yes, and then the first one. And so if you see, we have the Hebrew right there, just give it a shot, and remember, you want to go, "Huh!" Everyone practice. Very good. It's good, it's easy at this time when everyone has a cold. And the last one? You're all so excellent with your Hebrew! Yashachohak, we say from strength to strength. So if you see on your song sheets, we have "Not by Might" and "Not by Power," and then "Light One Candle" and "Ma'osor." So I'm going to show you the moves, you might remember this from last year. So when we say "power," I want everyone to do this, I expect everyone to do this, this is in English. Power, everybody! Power! Okay, ru'ah means spirit. So ru'ah, ru'ah. The children sing, la 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 la. The children dream, ah. And another song will rise. Turn and look at each other and say, "Say what? Say what?" Okay. And then once again, the power, and then peace sign, shalom. You guys ready? Okay, first, we start with a little clapping, very reminiscent of West Side Story. Not by might and not by power, power, but by spirit alone, ru'ah, shall we all live in peace? Again, not by might and not by power, power, but by spirit alone, ru'ah, shall we all live in peace? The children sing, la 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 la. The children dream, ah. And their tears may fall, but we'll hear them call, and another song will rise. Say what? Another song will rise. Say what? Another song will rise. Not by might and not by power, power, but by spirit alone, ru'ah, shall we all live in peace? One more time, not by might and not by power, power, but by spirit alone, ru'ah, shall we all live in peace? Not by might, not by power, shalom. Woo! You guys are great! Okay, so now if you'll turn it over, we have "Light One Candle." This is sort of like a Peter, Paul, and Mary song. So at the end, it's very important, we go, "Don't let the light go out, don't let the light go out, don't let the light go out!" Okay, are you ready? Okay. Light one candle for the Maccabee children, with thanks that their light didn't die. Light one candle for the pain they endured, when their right to exist was denied. Light one candle for the terrible sacrifice justice and freedom demand. Light one candle for the wisdom to know, when the peacemaker's time is at hand. Don't let the light go out, it's lasted for so many years. Don't let the light go out, let it shine through our hope and our tears. Light one candle for the strength that we need, to never become our own foe. And light one candle for those who are suffering the pain we learned so long ago. Light one candle for all we believe in, let anger not tear us apart. And light one candle to bind us together, with peace as the song in our hearts. Everyone, don't let the light go out, it's lasted for so many years. Don't let the light go out, let it shine through our hope and our tears. What is the memory that's valued so highly, that we keep it alive in that flame? What's the commitment to those who have died, when we cry out, they've not died in vain? We have come this far, always believing that justice will somehow prevail. This is the burden, this is the promise, and this is why we will not fail. Everyone, don't let, of course, the light go out, it's lasted for so many years. Don't let the light go out, let it shine through our hope and our tears. Same thing again, don't let the light go out, it's lasted for so many years. Don't let the light go out, let it shine through our hope and our tears. Don't let the light go out! Don't let the light go out! Don't let the light go out! Woo! Okay, and then we're going to do ma'osor, and then we're going to be, we're going to walk on the wild side, and we're going to close with something that's not on here. And it's a three-part round, and we're going to have our helpers over here, we'll divide everybody into like one, two, three, and we'll do that, okay? But first, ma'osor, which everyone should know, because the English, everyone should know. Let's just do the English, okay? Rock of ages, let our song praise thy saving power. Thou amidst the raging foes, wast our sheltering tower. Furious they assail'd us, but thine armor veiled us. And thy word broke their sword, when our own strength failed us. And thy word broke their sword, when our own strength failed us. Excellent! Okay, so now, we're going to all practice. Okay, so this next one is, we do lots of latkes, let's all eat them up, and then we do sevi von sov sov, which is dreidel, and then we do Maccabee, mac, 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 Maccabee, mac, 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 Maccabee, mac, 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 mac. Okay?
That's easy for me.
I'll do that part!
I'll break this down.
Okay, I'll do that part. Okay, so, but these guys are going to help. Okay, so this side will be lots of latkes. Okay, so Sunny and Crystal, you want to do sevi bone?
Yeah.
Okay, so both of you come over here, help them with sevi bone. You two, hold up the lots of latkes, okay? So all of you are lots of latkes. All of you are sevi bone. And do you want to just be Maccabee with me?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. You want to go be sevi bone with them?
No, 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 I'm going Maccabee with you.
Okay, the important thing is you have to remember at the end, we go, "Mac, mac, mac." And everyone is, the goal is to try to stop, like you did with "Don't Let the Light Go Out," with complete silence. Isn't silence golden? A lot happens in the silence, you know? It's the things we don't say that often mean more than that babble which comes out of our mouth. So at this time of the year, we want to think of good thoughts and have purity in our hearts and our souls and our minds, and in the season of light, we want to spread light with the light that the divine gives each and every one of us. We all have a special, unique light, and it's our journey in our lifetime to figure out who we are, how to cultivate our gifts, and best share our light with others. And then we elevate each other, we elevate the world, and we elevate our soul throughout our lifetime, until it's our time to be called back to our ultimate home. So happy holiday season, Festival of Light, and we all say, "Chag? Hanukkah? Sameah!" Okay, so now, we're all going to sing the whole song together, so you get used to it, before we split into the parts. When we split into the parts, you take your one part, and you just keep singing it, until I'll hold up my hand and I'll go, "Mac, mac, mac." Okay? Mac, 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 that means stop, like power. Okay, are we ready? Okay, so this is the way it goes. Lots of lotkes, lots of lotkes, lots of lotkes, let's all eat them up. Let's try it. Lots of lotkes, lots of lotkes, lots of lotkes, let's... One more time! Lots of lotkes, lots of lotkes, lots of lotkes. Those are potato pancakes! Lots of lotkes, lots of lotkes, lots of lotkes, let's all... Now, sevi von sov sov, sevi von sov sov, everyone! Sevi von sov sov, sevi von sov sov, sevi von sov sov, sevi von sov sov, sevi von sov sov. Maccabee! Maccabee! Mac, 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 Maccabee! Mac, 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 Maccabee! Mac, 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 Maccabee! Mac, 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 Maccabee! Mac, 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 Maccabee! Mac, 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 mac. But we only do those mac, mac, macs at the end, we'll just keep singing it, however long we want to keep singing it, because if the round's going on, we just keep it going on, okay? All right, are we ready? So now, let's all just sing it, we're going to sing it once through, and then we're going to break into our parts. Lots of latkes will be first, I will cue them, then sevi bone will come in, and then we'll come in with Maccabee. Okay? We're going to have some fun, a little ru'ah, a little spirit, we can do this, we got this. Okay, you guys ready? Lots of lotkes, lots of lotkes, lots of lotkes, let's all eat them up. Lots of lotkes, lots of lotkes, lots of lotkes, let's all eat them up. Sevi von sov sov, 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 sevi von sov sov. Maccabee! Mac, 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 Maccabee! Mac, 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 Maccabee! Mac, 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 Maccabee! Mac, 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 Maccabee! Mac, 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 Maccabee! Mac, 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 mac. Now, just latkes! Lots of lotkes, lots of lotkes, lots of lotkes, lots of lotkes. Lots of lotkes, lots of lotkes. Sevi von sov sov, sevi von sov sov, sevi von sov sov, sevi von sov sov. Sevi von sov sov, sevi von sov sov, Maccabee! Mac, 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 Maccabee! Woo! Thank you all for being such good sports. Have a happy and festive holiday, and a healthy and prosperous new year.
Thank you, Rabbi Thomas, and thank you, everyone who's come here today. Thank you to my colleagues, thank you to the choir! We couldn't have done it without you!
Thank you.
You know, this is a strange time we have in this world, and with all that's going on in this world, it's really a good time for us to sit back and reflect, and reflect on the peace and the light, as Rabbi mentioned. Whether you celebrate Hanukkah, or whether you celebrate Christmas, or whether you're following Kwanzaa, or whether you're, like some people, you just like to wear silly ties and funny socks and ugly sweaters, or you just like the gift-giving or the gift-receiving. It's a great time for us all to think back of all the great things that do happen in this world, and in America, and in Torrance, rather than all the negativity that we hear about and we read about, whether it's on the news, or it's just people commenting. So I really, I'm so appreciative that Rabbi Thomas could bring this to us today. I told her it wouldn't rain us out, and I actually, I think I like the indoor ceremony better.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's unfortunate that we have, usually, we do this on a council meeting, maybe we should do this as a standalone every year, because I find this to be a peaceful reflection. So again...
It's okay, mine keeps coming off, too.
Yeah. I don't have anything to hang on to.
Everyone, see the rainbow?
Yes!
Yeah, it, the rainbow covered the entire city.
But the council was, the City Hall was in the center.
Yeah. But in the Jewish tradition, the gold coin.
Oh, at the end of the rainbow. Oh, I like this, look at that. Office of the mayor, city of Torrance, he's always got a little gift.
Happy Hanukkah, everyone!
Thank you, everybody! Aside from the latkes, a traditional food is suf ganiot, which are jelly-filled donuts that we have things because of the light that are unfortunately a little greasy. So we're not going to make the chamber council dirty with powdered sugar and glaze and jelly. So if you come outside, we have, Judy over there has our suf ganiot, so happy holidays, thank you.
Good evening, welcome to the Torrance City Council Meeting for December 8th, 2020. We've actually been an executive session. Mr. Shapari, is there anything to report?
Good evening, Your Honor, nothing to report, thank you.
Thank you. Then we call the meeting back to order. And I wanna thank you all for joining us tonight. We understand with the constant flow of ever-changing information, it can be overwhelming to keep up or to take in new information. We appreciate your desire and dedication to tune in from home and remain connected to what is going on locally in your city. As you know, the newest order was put in place yesterday due to the ICU adult bed capacity in our region's hospital, uh, less than fifteen percent. At ten point six percent available capacity, we should not be contemplating not complying with this order. If you're still debating on attending that intimate holiday party or limited invite birthday gathering, just have a conversation with one of the many healthcare workers that are facilitating the overflow of COVID patients in our region's hospitals. They're exhausted and frustrated with the disregard in complying with health officer orders. I ask you to show them your respect and thanks by helping slow the spread. Your participation will help them celebrate the holidays with their families. It will allow them to return home safely after their long and extended shift. It will allow them to remain healthy enough to continue to fight this pandemic on the front lines. Stay in place, mind your space, cover your face. We continue our effort to support our local business community. This pandemic may not only take the lives of loved ones, but the lives of our beloved businesses too. Please support them today so they can continue to be here tomorrow. By local, we've done our best to accommodate businesses and help them navigate these orders. They need your help now too. Together with our partner cities in the South Bay, we've reached out to our state and county representatives. We've explored various options to keep them afloat and open. While we continue to fight for our businesses, we are asking you to put your money where your heart is. If you haven't already, join us in ordering takeout on Tuesdays. Better yet, takeout as often as you can to support our restaurants. Opt out of plasticware or napkins to keep their costs down. Tip on their service, it's not just the business owners that are suffering, it's their staff, their purveyors. It's also our breweries. Many of restaurants and retailers have set up curbside and contactless pickup to protect you and themselves. We are in this together, let's be there for each other. We continue to run normal business for our residents and the community. To keep Torrance moving forward, it's important for us that you have an opportunity to voice your comments during this pandemic. Public emails will continue to have a deadline of 2:00 PM on the day of the council meeting that you wish to comment on. Thank you to those of you who have met today's deadline, have been forwarded to the city council as supplemental material and will be entered into the public record. Any email submitted after the deadline will still be added to the public record, but later. For those of you tuning in via Facebook, YouTube, live stream, or City Cable, because of the challenges faced in this council format, and in accordance with Government Code Section 54954.3A, we will now dedicate a single sixty-minute comment period to hear the public on all agenda items, as well as for general orals by telephone call. The only exception to this sixty-minute period is public hearings. Comments that are directly relevant to agenda-sized hearings will be taken as part of that hearing. You may participate by calling in to the public input hotline. The number is 310-618-2404, and will be displayed on the screen. Please be patient when calling in. Please be aware that our call center is very busy taking multiple phone calls, and you may get a busy signal when calling in. If this is the case, please try calling back in a moment or two. City Clerk, have emails received before 2:00 PM today been processed as supplemental material and provided to the city council?
Yes, Your Honor, they have.
Thank you. We go on to the, uh, flag salute, led by Councilmember Griffith, followed by, and invocation by Rabbi, Rabbi Dee Dee Thomas of Emet, Temple Emet. Councilmember, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Please join me as we honor our flag and our country as I proudly recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Rabbi Thomas?
Hello, Mayor, city council members. It's wonderful to be here with you via this recording to bless you in this month of December. Normally, we would have just kindled the light of the Hanukkah together and then you would have had your council meeting. And I might be running off with my congregation to have our traditional Chinese food. Well, what a difference a year makes. Hopefully, next year, we will be together again, having some jelly donuts and then going forth to our festive activities. But right now, we wanna take the opportunity to call upon the energy of the divine forces in the universe to bless you for all that you do. These are challenging times, and the month of Kislev, the month that Hanukkah falls in, is considered to be the darkest month in the calendar. And humanity is facing the darkest period of this not only decade, but century. So we ask that all of you be blessed, your families be blessed once again for sharing you, but also that you get the, the fortitude that you need to continue to do the good work that you do. The Hanukkah story is a story of mighty few that were able to persevere against all odds to really change the course of history. And that is what all of you do on a daily basis. And that is what all of our essential workers are doing on the front lines every single day right now. So for our great city of Torrance, and for each and every one of you that serve so tirelessly and with such great devotion and great spirit and joy and love in your hearts, may you be blessed on high, may you have good health, may you have joy in your hearts, the willingness to get up every day and continue to serve. May you be replenished and renewed and refreshed, not only in your mind, but in your spirit, to continue to do the good work that you do. And may your families also experience this as you go forward in love and light and truth. May we all know good health, joy, and happiness in the new year, and may we be together again very soon, in person, to experience the joy of friendship and community. May you be blessed. Happy holidays.
Thank you, Rabbi. We appreciate your blessing. I'll take a report of the city clerk on the posted agenda.
Your Honor, this agenda was posted on December 3rd. With a revised agenda posted on December 4th.
Thank you. I'll take a motion to waive further reading of resolution and ordinance after number and title. Councilmember Ashcraft.
I move to waive further readings.
Councilmember Chen.
Councilman Chen, a second.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Chen.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Griffith.
Yes.
Councilmember Kalani.
Yes.
Councilmember Matucci.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashcraft.
Yes.
Mayor Fury.
Yes.
Your Honor, that vote carried unanimously.
Thank you. Announcement of withdrawal deferred under supplemental items.
Thank you, Your Honor, this is Adam Shapari, the city manager. Tonight, we have Item 6C, appoint members to fill social services, traffic, and water commissions. Vacant and consideration of appointments, these are all supplemental materials. Item 7, oral communications. And Item 9A, provide COVID-19 recovery update and determine direction on orders from the County of Los Angeles and the City of California regarding COVID-19. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Uh, turning now to announcements, I have a few. Good evening. Typically in December every year, the social services... Typically, in December every year, the Social Services Commission would be actively recruiting volunteers to assist with the homeless count, which takes place at the end of January. The Los Angeles Homeless Service Authority held a special commission meeting on Friday, December 4, 2020. The homeless commission took action to seek a waiver from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, allowing the Los Angeles Continuum of Care to forego conduction of an unsheltered street count in 2021. Taking account the various stay-at-home orders in place, LASHA concluded it would be a tremendous challenge to conduct a safe and comprehensive 2021 unsheltered count. It was not an easy decision, but the priority of the health and safety of the volunteers was taken into consideration. The commission will continue to keep us updated on the state of the waiver approval process. For those of you who are planning on volunteering for the homeless count, please don't go too far. We'll be back next December to recruit you for the 2022 count. Now, we have the Federal Legislative Advocacy Committee will have a virtual meeting on Thursday, December 10, 2020, from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM. The purpose of the meeting is to discuss the 2020 to 2022 priority projects and grant funding opportunities. Again, that is on Thursday, December 10, from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Again, it will be meeting virtually. Now, city council workshop. Work continues on the city's downtown revitalization plan. City staff and the consultant team are concluding the diagnostic portion of the analysis and engaging in the visioning process. On December 15, 2020, at 6:00 PM, the city council will participate in a workshop to discuss the revitalization plan, as just prior to our meeting next week at 6:00 PM. The workshop will last one hour and will include a briefing on the diagnostic findings that will lead into a visioning session for the downtown area. The public is encouraged to participate. For further information and for a link to the workshop, please refer to the Community Development Department webpage. Again, that will be posted, and it will be 6:00 PM just prior to our council meeting next Tuesday night. Which then takes us to community matters. Item 6A is a proclamation recognizing David Wolfram for his contribution to the South Bay Arts Committee. Councilmember Kalani, would you please read this proclamation for us?
It would be my honor, Mayor, thank you. Whereas Destination Art Studios and Gallery was established on November 14, 2014, by a group of local artists who wanted to promote fine art in Torrance and the South Bay, as well as provide a location for art exhibitions, classes, and art camaraderie. And whereas David Wolfram was instrumental in the conceptionalization, design, and build-out of the studios and galleries located at 1815 West 213th Street in Torrance. And whereas David was the driving force behind many art exhibitions and events at Destination Art, including a Christmas tree decorated with all handmade ornaments of his very own design, and seventy original paintings of masterpieces with a holiday twist donated to the Festival of Trees. And whereas David is an exceptionally fine artist and art instructor, selling numerous paintings to patrons in Torrance and the South Bay, and he was recognized as an excellent in art award winner by the Torrance Cultural Arts Commission. And whereas David has served as president of Destination Art for the past four years, president of the Torrance Artists Guild, a founding board member of the Pastel Society of Southern California, and as a member of the Pacific Arts Group. And whereas, in addition to his invaluable contribution to the South Bay art community, David has also actively supported the Downtown Torrance Association in promoting small businesses and revitalization of the area.
Now therefore, I, Patrick J. Fury, as mayor of the city of Torrance, California, do hereby honor and express sincere appreciation to David Wolfram as Destination Art and all of the Torrens celebrate his many contributions to the art community, and wish him well as he departs the South Bay for New Horizons. Signed this 8th day of December, 2020. And personal congratulations to David, we're going to really miss you, but I understand the proclamation will be delivered, and you will be enjoying it this weekend in your farewell soiree at Destination Art, and hopefully, we'll be able to stop by and say goodbye in person. Thank you very much for all you did for our community and our city of Torrance while you stayed here. That takes us on to Item 6B, recognition of the 2020 Census Complete Count Committee. Tonight, I'd like to commend all of the members of the 2020 Census Complete Count Committee for the city of Torrance. The U.S. Census is conducted every ten years for a variety of very important purposes. The data that this group gathered will be instrumental in ensuring that everyone in the city is counted. The gathered data assures that Torrance is well represented, particularly in the legislature, which then helps us acquire appropriate grants and resources. These grants and resources are vital in our efforts to continue to offer quality programs, services, and activities. On May 21, 2019, I appointed the members to the 2020 Census Complete Count Committee. Their efforts were essential in the success of this long process, which began actually back in July of 2019. At the first meeting on July 2019, the members brought their enthusiasm, energy, and ideas to engage and educate the community, have an understanding of the importance and benefits of the 2020 census. Each one of the members dedicated their free time working to establish an accurate census count for the city of Torrance. Their efforts have not gone unnoticed, and I know that their hard work will benefit the community for years to come. Due to the coronavirus, the committee had to reevaluate their strategies and plans due to the protocols and the elimination of large group gatherings. The committee had to develop other outreach methods to the community. One of our partners in the Torrance Area Chamber conducted a social media campaign, including articles on the importance of the 2020 census. Articles in the Torrance Chamber Weekly Newsletter, eBlast, coordinated a presentation with the 2020 census representative, and more. Another partner, Torrance Unified School District promoted the 2020 census with posters, social media, and provided information to parents when picking up school schedules and materials for online learning at home. The committee took on this challenge and managed to accomplish a response rate of seventy-seven point five percent. Once again, I commend all of you and thank you for your efforts. At this time, I'd like to acknowledge the members of the 2020 Complete Count Committee: Ann Chen, Donna Duberan, Judy Gerber, Deborah Hannan, Amy Khan, Jackie LaBeuf, Georgia Perkins, Osama Sheikh, Glenn Terry. In addition, I would also like to acknowledge the 2020 census representatives and city staff that were instrumental in supporting the 2020 Census Complete Count Committee, to include our census staff was Ivy Dwallo and Mary Chris DiPace. Our city staff was Rachel Bieber, Sunny Lee, Jamie Lay, Valencia Mota, Connor Shortland, and of course, Katie Wong. And last but certainly not least, Eleanor Barrett-Jones, for facilitating meetings and getting the ball rolling made even more challenging by this pandemic. Each of you will receive a certificate of appreciation for your contribution and participation in the 2020 Census Complete Count Committee. You know, on behalf of my colleagues, it takes a village to count a village, and we certainly put together worker bees, people who are willing to step forward and take their time to do this important task, and we, as a city, appreciate the hard work that you guys did. And now, we're going to move on to 6C, and that comes from the city clerk.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's the city clerk's recommendation that the mayor and council review applications and appoint members to fill vacancies on the social services, traffic, and water commissions from a list of qualified applicants, and consider reappointments of eligible current commissioners, and the city clerk will administer the oath of office at a future date. And I believe we have a list of the applicants. The first is Edward Agiri. Mr. Agiri, are you on the line? Perhaps we can move on to the next candidate, please, Rebecca?
Sure.
The next candidate is Deborah Bickford.
Present. This is Deborah Bickford, applying to be a commissioner on the Social Service Commission.
The next candidate, Commissioner?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I believe you have one minute to speak, Commissioner, to introduce yourself.
Okay, thank you. So, this is Deborah Bickford. It has been my pleasure to serve as the interim commissioner on the Social Service Commission. I have found the work that we have done over the last year and a half to be very rewarding, informative, and hopefully, we will move forward to many of the problems that we have with, that the Social Service Commission has encountered. I look forward to being appointed again to the Social Service Commission, and hopefully, we'll be able to serve for the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next applicant is Kim Bin.
Present. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Ms. Binz. You have one minute to introduce yourself, please.
My name is Kim Binz, I'm a resident of Torrance. I would like to thank the mayor and the council for the consideration of my application for the Social Service Commission Board, which I have worked in many community projects dealing with substance-induced homeless and housing. I have a master's in public administration and a master's in addiction counseling. So, I will be taking consideration my application for appointment. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next applicant is Spencer De La Cruz. Mr. De La Cruz, are you on the line? Perhaps we can move on to the next applicant, please, Rebecca? Thank you, Katie. The next applicant is Mar Su Kent Kawhi. Mr. Kawhi, are you on the line? Perhaps we can move on to the next applicant, please, Rebecca? The next applicant is Emily Mitchell Maddie.
Hi, this is Emily Maddie. I'm excited to talk to you all again. I'm applying to be a part of the Water Commission, and I've lived in Torrance for ten years. My background is in engineering and design. I've worked with the majority of my career in the field of facilities maintenance and engineering, so I feel like I'd be well qualified for the Water Commission. I'd like to help serve my community and just be a good example to my two kids, you know, showing them a good example for civic involvement. I also want to thank Councilmember Chen, who's going to be meeting with my son, I just found out tomorrow, for a scout activity, so thank you in advance for that.
The next applicant is Mario Obeja.
Hi, I'm applying for the Traffic Commission. Good evening, mayor and councilpersons. I'm applying tonight for a reappointment to the Traffic Commission. Most of you already know me, so I'll just give a brief background. I've lived in Torrance for two decades. I definitely care about my community. I retired in 2014, and I got even more involved in community groups and in civic engagement, such as the Strategic Planning Commission. I'm an active member of my Seaside Neighborhood Association, and I'm a board member of a local 501(c)(3), as well as a lifelong blood donor. I am an existing Torrance commissioner. I've served one term as chair, and I respectfully ask for your support and reappointment to the Traffic Commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next applicant is Robert Ryan Ruzon.
Hi, my name's Ryan Ruzon. I'm here with my wife Jen and my first grader Lincoln and sixth grader Caleb, we're in Torrance Unified School District, and grateful for all of your service, yes. And we have been complaining quite a bit about the parks and complaining a lot about distance learning at home, and so, we're trying to do our part, offer help, grateful for your service, and happy to help out and serve ourselves. Thank you.
The next applicant is William Reynolds.
Good evening, mayor and council. I am Bill Reynolds, an applicant for a position on the Social Services Commission. I am retired as a supervisory contract auditor for the U.S. Department of Defense for thirty years. Besides my compassion for those who are struggling in life, which comes from my religious background, I believe that my experience analyzing data and systems as an auditor will be a great resource for the city of Torrance in developing an effective and efficient response to the problem of those experiencing homelessness, which is a very complicated issue. I wish to say I would look forward to working with a new outreach worker on the issue, and finally, I am very interested in the possibilities presented by the concept of navigation centers being used in Orange County, which will be further considered for Torrance based on council's concurrence on November 10. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
The next applicant is Eli Rogers.
Hi, I'm Eli Rogers, and I am applying for the Social Services Commission. I wanted to thank you, Torrance City Council, and the citizens for taking the time to consider me for this position. I graduated from South High in 2011, and obtained my master's in mechanical engineering from Cal Poly San Luis Obispo in 2017. I'm the youth director at First Christian Church of Torrance, and I'm also the youngest member of my church's board. I'm in charge of church growth and communication. I have been facilitating partnerships with secular social support groups like Community Loving, and have been volunteering with Family Promise South Bay since their creation. First Christian Church of Torrance has been mindful of the homeless situation for a long time, as we used to host the annual homeless count. Thank you for considering me for this opportunity, and I look forward to serving the city and its citizens, not only to support homeless services, but also...
The next applicant is Adam Schwartz.
Good evening, mayor. I'm city council. I'm Adam Schwartz, and it would be my honor and privilege to serve on the Social Services Commission. I have lived in Torrance in the South Bay for one year, but my family has been here for more than a hundred. My great-grandfather was one of the first business people here, and he was known for his radical compassion and giving to the whole area. I want to continue his civic legacy, and I believe that I would be a very good fit for the Social Services Commission. I have a long history in activism, as well as have volunteered with mutual aid organizations, including South Bay Community Cares. I would love to bring my compassion and empathy to the table and work with the city that I love so much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next applicant is Cindy Scotto.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Cindy Scotto, and I'm asking for your consideration of my reappointment to the Social Services Commission for a four-year term. I was originally appointed to this commission four years ago. During the past four years, we developed a work plan and established goals, many of which we have accomplished. I am proud to have been part of the original commission that helped shape the direction of the Social Services Commission that we see today, but there still is a lot more work to do. I would like to be part of the future of this relatively new commission and see how much more we can do to tackle social issues in the city of Torrance. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Your Honor, the next applicant is Nasir Shaw.
Hello, I'm Nasir Shaw, and I'm applying for the Social Services Commission. A little bit about me, I grew up in the local area and am a proud product of the South Bay. I'm a senior technical program manager by profession for the past fifteen years, where part of my job is to establish and roll out solutions to resolve specific challenges and reach specific goals, both technical and people-related. In addition to my corporate... In addition to my corporate experience with top tech companies, along with my MBA, I have been able to bring my expertise to local nonprofits in efforts to help the community more effectively, such as scholarships for enrichment programs, fundraising, food drives, crowdsourcing and sending containers of relief supplies overseas, along with backpack giveaways and other community outreach efforts. I'm here today because I would like to do more than just give back to my community. I'd like to be part of moving our community forward in a sustainable way. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
The next applicant is Gregory Taylor.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name's Gregory Taylor, and I'm asking for your support and appointment to the open Torrance Water Commissioner position. A little bit about my qualifications, I have a degree in biology from UCLA. Early in my career, I was a chemist for a company that specialized in waterborne films, coatings, and chemicals, used for aerospace and electronics industry. I was a senior executive for a healthcare company that also manufactured research instrumentation used in understanding water chemistry and biological functions. I co-founded a healthcare company that focused on infection control and safety products. And I'm a thirty-year-plus Torrance resident, super interested in the quality of the water that we all share and enjoy here in the city. And lastly, I provide financial guidance to stock and bond investors. I think I bring a degree of financial acumen to the position. So that, all that in consideration, I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next applicant is Dan Thomas.
Good evening, Torrance City Council. I'm Dan Thomas, a Torrance resident. I'm homeowner in Torrance for over twenty-seven years and a user and observer of the roadways and local traffic for much longer. I'm an active member of various civic organizations and nonprofits within the city of Torrance. I am currently serving on the Torrance Traffic Commission, and I'm happy to do so if your honorable body desires me to. In fact, I'm currently the Chair of the Torrance Traffic Commission. Recently was re-elected for a second year by my colleague. I work well with city staff and our liaison. In fact, just last night, we, the Traffic Commission, held, and I moderated, another virtual commission meeting via Zoom. We had over fifty members of the public who joined, twenty-five who chose to speak and shared their thoughts. I enjoy giving back to the community and interfacing with the public work staff to keep things moving in Torrance. Additionally and separately, I've also indicated an interest in the Water Commission. I've attended multiple water infrastructure inspection tours, Diamond Lake, Northern California Delta, Lower Colorado. I've got a keen interest in the natural curiosity of the behind-the-scenes and a strong desire
Thank you.
And the last applicant, Your Honor, is Novilette Witt.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers and staff. I'm Novilette Witt, and I am applying for the Social Services Commission. I have been a Torrance resident for nearly a decade, and I am a real estate broker and business owner here in Torrance. This city offers actually quite a few amazing commissions, and I was fortunate to sit in a few of the meetings prior to COVID. However, the commission that struck me the most and the one that I feel I'm most passionate about is social services. And so I'm confident I can make a difference and would be honored to earn your support. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Rebecca, are you on the line? I am. There are four appointments available for the Social Services Commission. Your Honor, would you like to continue?
Okay, I can do it. There are four appointments available for the Social Service Commission. One partial term expires June 30, 2021. One partial term expires June 30, 2023, and there are two full terms expiring June 30, 2024. Two applicants are eligible for reappointment. And in fact, I will nominate both of those applicants, Deborah Beckford and Cindy Scotto. Counsel, any other nominations? Councilmember Griffiths? Followed by Councilmember Ashcraft?
I'd like to nominate Ms. Witt.
Councilmember Ashcraft?
I would like to nominate Robert Ryan Rouzon.
Councilmember Kalani?
I would like to nominate, please, Ms. Kim Binns.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Bill Reynolds?
Councilmember Matucci?
Nominate Nasir Shaw.
Any other nominations? I see none, or take a vote. In this vote, you have to vote for four.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Deborah Beckford, Cindy Scotto, Bill Reynolds, and Novilette Witt.
Councilmember Griffiths?
Ms. Beckford? Mr. Reynolds? Ms. Scotto? Ms. Witt?
Councilmember Kalani?
Deborah Beckford, Kim Binns, Cindy Scotto, Novilette Witt.
Councilmember Matucci?
Thank you. Deborah Beckford? Cindy Scotto? Nasir Shaw? And Novilette Witt?
Councilmember Ashcraft?
Debbie Beckford, Cindy Scotto? Novilette Witt, and Robert Ryan Rouzon.
Councilmember Chen?
Deborah Beckford? Cindy Scotto? Nasir Shaw? And Novilette Witt?
Mayor Fury?
Deborah Beckford? Bill Reynolds? Cindy Scotto? And Novilette Witt?
Your Honor, one moment, please, while I tell you the votes.
Not a problem.
Your Honor, Deborah Beckford and Cindy Scotto were reappointed to the terms ending June 30, 2024. Novilette Witt is the next applicant being appointed, and William Reynolds is the fourth applicant. How would you like to handle the other two terms, since they have different ending dates?
This is Patrick Sullivan, the city attorney. They usually go by vote, but if you went with the two incumbents, getting the 2024?
Right, I've given those, then those terms.
And Novilette Witt would have, would get 2023, and then Reynolds with three votes would get 2021.
Okay, thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, Lerner Council. We appreciate that help, for sure. All right, now we move on to, congratulations to our two returning commissioners and our two brand-new commissioners. The city clerk will be in touch with you how to be sworn in and sign your affidavit. To those who have applied only for that commission, I apologize. We only had so many seats, please, and we always have that problem. We have way too many volunteers in our community, but don't let that hesitate to do it again, please, because volunteers are needed, and we have vacancies come up quite often. As you see on the Social Services Commission, there was two vacancies that came up during the terms of the office, so. So then we'll move on to, this is two appointments available for the Traffic Commission. Both of those terms expire June 30, 2024. And two applicants are eligible for reappointment, and as I am the mayor, I'm going to nominate Mr. Obejas and Mr. Thomas, our incumbents. And I'll open up to any other nominations. Councilmember Matucci?
I'll nominate Spencer De La Cruz.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, I will take vote, and each time, we will vote for two this time.
Councilmember Griffiths?
Mr. Obejas? Mr. Thomas?
Councilmember Kalani?
Mr. Obejas and Mr. Thomas.
Councilmember Matucci?
De La Cruz and Thomas.
Councilmember Ashcraft?
Mr. Obejas and Mr. Thomas.
Councilmember Chen?
Spencer De La Cruz and Dan Thomas.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Mario Obejas and Dan Thomas.
Mayor Fury?
Mr. Obejas and Mr. Thomas.
Your Honor, the two appointees are Mario Obejas and Dan Thomas.
And thank you again for those who applied for the commission seat and were not appointed. We appreciate your volunteerism and coming forward to help us. And unfortunately, there was only two seats and two very good incumbent candidates who have done a tremendous job, and that's basically the reason they got reappointed. And now we go on. There are two appointments available for the Water Commission. Both of these terms expire June 30, 2024. One applicant is eligible for reappointment, and I will nominate Mr. Kawai for reappointment. Are there any other nominations from the council? Councilmember Kalani?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to nominate Ms. Mitchell Maddie, please.
Councilmember Griffiths?
Mr. Taylor.
And seeing how Mr. Thomas has been already appointed, reappointed to the Traffic Commission, that is all the nominations we can take, but we will now vote, and we vote for two each.
Councilmember Kalani?
Thank you. Mr. Kawai and Ms. Mitchell Maddie.
Councilmember Matucci?
Kawai and Taylor.
Councilmember Ashcraft?
Kent Kawai and Emily Mitchell Maddie.
Councilmember Chen?
Emily Maddie and Greg Taylor.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Kent Kawai and Emily Mitchell Maddie.
Councilmember Griffiths?
Mr. Kawai? Mr. Taylor.
Mayor Fury? Mayor Fury?
I'm sorry, I was on mute. Mr. Kawai and Mr. Taylor.
Your Honor, Mr. Kawai has been reappointed. The other two applicants are tied.
Okay, I think with this instance, we take a vote for those two nominees only, and we each have one vote.
Councilmember Ashcraft?
Emily Mitchell Maddie.
Councilmember Chen?
Emily Maddie.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Emily Maddie.
Councilmember Griffiths?
Mr. Taylor.
Councilmember Kalani?
Emily Mitchell Maddie.
Councilmember Matucci?
Gregory Taylor.
Mayor Fury?
Emily Mitchell Maddie.
Your Honor, the second appointee is Emily Mitchell Maddie.
Again, congratulations for reappointment, Mr. Kawai, and to Ms. Mitchell Maddie, and to Mr. Taylor. Again, I can only encourage you to apply again when a commission appointment is available. We certainly need people of your caliber on our commissions, and it's just, unfortunately, we don't have enough seats for absolutely everybody. Again, to those who are appointed, Mr. Kawai and Mr. Mitchell Maddie. The city clerk's office will be in touch with you to swear you in and get you to sign the affidavit. Thank you and congratulations to those who all have been appointed. Without you and your colleagues on the commissions, this council would have a very difficult time operating. You take care of an awful lot of the jobs or the business or the stuff that we have to do and riddle it down to us before it comes to us, and we certainly appreciate that. I know I do every day. We are now moving on to the sixty-minute public comment period for agenda items and general orals. If any members of the public want to speak, please call the public comment hotline now at 310-618-2404. City Council Rules of Order, Section 6.4E, provides that speakers can only speak once. Any speaker that attempts to speak a second time on any item will be disconnected. Callers will have one minute to speak on one agenda item, two minutes to speak on two or more agenda items, and one minute for general orals. Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes and will be disconnected automatically. Please speak when prompted and state the number of the agenda item or items you wish to speak on. Or if you want to make a general comment, there is a delay in the broadcast. Do not try to follow what you may hear on the broadcast. Please turn down the volume on your TV or viewing device, and please do not use Bluetooth or speaker phones. When speaking on agenda items, you must be on topic. We would like to get in as many speakers as possible. If you're not speaking on topic, or we can't tell if you're on topic, you'll get a warning to get back on topic. And if you don't, then you forfeit the remainder of your time, and we will move on to the next caller pursuant to City Council Rules of Order, Section 6.5 and Section 6.7b3 and b4. If there's no speakers waiting before the sixty-minute period has elapsed, we will close the public comment portion of the meeting. So please note that the council orders will still take place at the end of the meeting. Do we have anybody signed up at the call center?
Yes, Mayor, I'll begin to patch in the call.
Thank you.
Sheila, you are now unmuted. Can you please state what agenda item you're calling on? Sheila? Are you still on the phone?
Yes, Oral Communications in 9A.
Thank you, your two minutes are
The fact that you want to defy county orders regarding COVID and outdoor dining and playgrounds when there is a stay-at-home order is beyond ridiculous. You are risking more lives. You are once again not listening to those who you are supposed to, much like you defied the orders of the grand jury in 2018 to create a civilian oversight commission of the police before Christopher was murdered. On this day before the trite remark of the murder of Christopher, I once again demand On this day before the trite earmark of the murder of Christopher, I am once again demanding that you follow the demands of the family. One, create a civilian oversight commission, and two, fire Officers Anthony Chavez and Matthew Concanon. Between April 7th and December 2nd, a total of 2,575 emails have been sent to you. Of those, 1,998 of them were for Christopher. That's 76% of the emails. Between 7/7 and 12/2, 587 phone calls have been placed to your meeting. 359 of them have been for Christopher. That's 61% of the phone calls. This is a pattern. It is clear that the community backs these demands. You, as a elected official who represent the community, need to heed these demands. It is essential to allow the community to be heard and to give some resemblance of justice for Christopher and his family. It is the least you can do. I can't help but have my heart break for this family and all they have endured. Two years of brief abuse, silencing, and straight disrespect. Now they move into the holidays without their beloved family members. They just had a COVID Thanksgiving, which is hard enough because of the way things are, but on top of it, they're missing their loved ones due to senseless violence. Find it in the bottom of the hole where your heart should be to do the right thing. Stop dragging your heels, you nibbling cowards. It will happen, whether it's forced upon you or you are able to hang on to some shred of humanity by doing it yourself. It will happen. Justice for-
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because her time was up. Moving on to the next caller. Michelle R., you are now unmuted. Can you please state what agenda item you're calling on?
9A and General Comment.
Thank you, your two minutes starts now.
Thank you. 9A, I appreciate your comments. Today, we honor Christopher DeAndre Mitchell's legacy and in his memory, continue to fight for justice and accountability for a more equitable Torrance. Tomorrow marks two years since Torrance PD senselessly stole Christopher's life, a crime for which no one has been fired nor held accountable. Both officers had previously killed on the job, and we still allow them to carry badges and walk our streets. We recognize the first family who have so bravely and openly shared with us their pain and their memories of him, which they hold dear. It's their commitment to uphold the Christopher's spirit and shine that powers this work and drives us to take action and fight for change. And we fight for our children and our neighbors' children, who could be the next generation of Black youth, to have their names become hashtags. Christopher's life mattered. He's not just the name of another victim of police violence. He's someone's friend, nephew, someone's neighbor, someone's best friend, our community member. His spirit is part of our community's soul. Twenty-three years of love and friendships and laughter and life experience, shared with family and friends and community, stolen in 15 seconds. Fifteen seconds, that's it, gone. And now a lifetime of loss felt by empty seats at family dinners, birthdays, holidays, weddings, graduations, and harder felt when reflecting on his unfulfilled dreams and boundless life potential. His life was stolen, his family's peace was stolen, people of color's sense of safety in our community was stolen, and our community heart and trust is broken. This is a tragedy. Life is sacred. Christopher's life was sacred. Pouring the trigger is not a game. This cannot be undone, but justice can be served, and police must be held accountable. So in the name of Christopher DeAndre Mitchell, fire and prosecute Killer Cop Anthony Chavez and Matthew Concanon, and establish a civilian oversight committee. Black Lives Matter, I yield my time.
Mayor, moving on to the next caller. Julia R., you are now unmuted. Can you please state what agenda item you're calling on?
General Oral.
Thank you, your one minute starts now.
Have any of you ever lost a loved one to a violent death? If any of you cold robots could experience anything close to feeling, you would know that the saying "It gets easier" does not apply. I know you all have zero creativity or imagination, but try for a moment to imagine that your loved one had been shot. Now imagine your representative chuckling like children in front of a flag with the name of your murderers while they cut off your pleas for justice weekly, still after two years. That is what calling in for Christopher DeAndre Mitchell is like. That is what you, Matucci, and the rest of you devils represent, and how you will be remembered. I can't help but ache for this family. What is wrong with you that you do not? It has been two years, two years! Torrance City Council, what is wrong with you? Two years! You asked for the, we asked for the bare minimum. Create a civilian oversight commission and fire Officers Chavez and Concanon. We are merely asking you to put-
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because her time was up. Moving on to the next caller. Maticos K., you are now unmuted. Can you please state what agenda item you're calling on?
It's pronounced Matios. Item 9A and Oral-
Uh, thank you, sir. Your one minute starts now.
Regarding item 9A opposing the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health Order, that's incredibly stupid. Had we followed the social distancing guidelines and outdoor orders, and if people wore a mask, we wouldn't be dealing with this issue this far in advance. An alternative that might better suit people is you defund your police department, use that money to aid the people that are hurting financially, and keep your small businesses in place. I think that would be a better response. On to my oral communication. Gascon, the newly sworn NDA, released an open letter to law enforcement, warning them of significant changes to come. This warning should resonate particularly strongly with Torrance PD, whose culture of violence and racism has been shielded by their former partner, Jackie Lacy, and the complicit city council. As we've reminded you multiple times, DA Gascon is reopening Christopher DeAndre Mitchell's case. As the second anniversary of Christopher's murder approaches, I implore you to attempt an act of even performative justice and fire Officers Matthew Concanon and Anthony Chavez for Christopher's murder ahead of their inevitable murder convictions. Establish a civilian oversight commission to hold the Torrance Police Department accountable. And a quick question from Matucci. Did that thin blue line flag come with your most recent set of clarins? That flag and that phrase, and the phrase "Blue Lives" are conceived in direct response to the phrase "Black Lives Matter." So I don't want to hear any bullshit rationalization about you showing your support for law enforcement. You're showing your true colors. You're a racist piece of shit. And a friend of mine told me to tell you to go fuck yourself. I yield the rest of my time.
Mayor, moving on to the next caller. Kim I., you are now unmuted. Can you please state what agenda item you're calling on?
Uh, yeah, I'm calling for oral comment.
Thank you, your one minute starts now.
I'm calling because I'm just tired of this. I'm tired of you allowing this family to grieve their loved one without justice. The fact of the matter is, you guys were told to create a civilian oversight commission, and you didn't do it. You didn't fire the officers responsible, let alone charge them with murder. Well, as I said last week, and as everyone's been saying, we have a new Attorney General who is going to open, reopen the case. And when that happens, you guys are going to look like the idiots you are for not having bothered to do that yourselves. That's your job. And I don't know what is up with that racist-ass flag behind, I don't even know what the dude's name is. That shit is racist. And the fact that you allow it to continue says a lot about Torrance and the people that run it. I really, I have nothing else to say. Y'all are-
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because her time was up. Moving on to the next caller. JL, you are now unmuted. Can you please state what agenda item you're calling on? JL, are you still on the line?
Yes, 9A and General Comment.
Thank you, your two minutes starts now.
Um, like our beloved Maya Angelou once says, "When people show you who they are, believe them." Like 9A, you guys will completely focus on your profits and your gain and not human life. The reason why there's a shutdown order, surprise, surprise, you motherfuckers, it's because people are fucking dying. So if you focus on the death and preventing it, maybe businesses will be able to be back open, but you guys lack the capability to understand that. Which isn't surprising, because for two years now, for two years now, you guys have ignored the orders of a grand jury to put an oversight commission over the Torrance Police because they are racist-ass police that murder Black bodies. They murdered Christopher DeAndre Mitchell within 15 seconds of arriving on the scene, leaving that mother and that family to grieve every single day, and then called in to you low-down, simple-ass motherfuckers to not do that goddamn thing. The firing of those murderers should have been immediately. As you can see, the DA will be doing his job and will be firing them, and they will be held accountable. So will you. You will not have any of your seats, I guarantee you that. And on top of all the laughter of empty, this motherfucker has the audacity to show his colors with that "Blue Lives Matter." So I'm happy you want to show that you're a racist-ass motherfucker and show the Torrance area and all of its communities that where you run. And the fact that the mayor continues to turn off his camera, that's probably because he's checking his-
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because her time was up. Moving on to the next caller. Carolina P., you are now unmuted. Can you please state what agenda item you're calling on?
Hi, Public Comment.
Thank you, your one minute starts now.
I was just liking, I would just like to say that I, the remarks made by the previous people that spoke before me, uh-
Mayor, that caller disconnected herself. Moving on to the next caller. Cameron P., you are now unmuted. Can you please state what agenda item you're calling on?
General Public Comment.
Thank you, your one minute starts now.
Hi, I'm back again to echo the demands of Paco de la Hada away in Berlin, demanding that you create a civilian oversight commission and fire Anthony Chavez and Matthew Concanon for now the two-year-old man who issued the murder of Christopher by a racist police officer. It's absolutely disgusting and nothing has been done. I don't know how you guys could just show him, pay him our price, even once, and decide not to do anything. I don't know how you could just sue her and read you and the fact that you're missing over and over again, and at this point, let's just admit that it's just because of this racist-ass pride. Because you got your ego hurt because we called you out for the racist people that you are, and how racist this city is. I know you guys are tired of hearing this.
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because her time was up. Moving on to the next caller. Anika S., you are now unmuted. Can you please state what agenda item you're calling on?
Oral Communications.
Thank you, your one minute starts now.
Hi, I'm a South Bay resident, and I'm calling in solidarity with the family of Christopher DeAndre Mitchell and Black Lives Matter, Los Angeles. I demand you fire Matthew Concanon and Anthony Chavez and create a civilian oversight commission of Torrance Police Department. Police are not the judges and juries of our cities, but they often are the executioners. And within 15 seconds of arriving, these officers decided that this young man would not spend the holidays with his loved ones, and would not live past age 23, and would not ever hurt his mom again. And this has to stop, and we won't give up. I yield my time.
Mayor, moving on to the next caller. Aga K., you are now unmuted. Can you please state what agenda item you're calling on?
General Comment.
Thank you, your one minute starts now.
You have blood on your hands. Let me say that again. You have blood on your hands, a blood of a 23-year-old Black man that was killed within 15 seconds. Tomorrow marks two years since his life was taken, and you haven't done shit about it. So it is on you, because it's not only in your power to fire those officers, it's your fucking job. So do your fucking job, because we will not stop calling you. Have you ever thought for a second that what you would have felt if that was your child? If not, I would invite you to do some dig, like deep fucking soul digging, if you even have one, because it doesn't really look like you do. Fire those officers who took Christopher's life, Matthew Concanon and Anthony Chavez, and create a civilian oversight commission.
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because her time was up. Moving on to the next caller. Stephanie P., you are now unmuted. Can you please state what agenda item you're calling on?
Oral Communications.
Thank you, your one minute starts now.
Two years ago tomorrow, Torrance Police approached a sleeping Christopher Mitchell, woke him up, shined a flashlight in his face, and gave him a conflicting set of instructions. He did not attempt to flee. He did not draw a weapon. He apologized and attempted to understand, and then they killed him. This all took 15 seconds. It's been two years, two devastating years for his mother and his entire family. He should be here today. He should be here. The officers who killed him should be an embarrassment to this city and to all of you. They should horrify and terrify the citizens of Torrance. Why aren't more people horrified? Well, we're horrified, and we are not going to stop demanding justice for Christopher DeAndre Mitchell. And you should all be embarrassed and horrified that that man is sitting there with a Blue Lives Matter flag. I don't care what kind of rationale you have used to say that that's okay. It is not okay, and-
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because her time was up. Moving on to the next caller. Mel M., you are now unmuted. Can you please state what agenda item you're calling on?
9A and Oral Communications.
Thank you, your two minutes starts now.
So you have to prioritize life. You have to prioritize people's well-being. So by not shutting down for COVID and not taking care of your citizens, you're just, you don't care about human life. That is your job. People elected you, people forgo their own power to you, to elect you, to govern them. So fucking govern them in a way that actually helps their lives and not helps your profits. And like other callers before have said, tomorrow marks two years to the day since Christopher DeAndre Mitchell was murdered by two of your cops, Anthony Chavez and Matthew Concanon. So we demand that you not only fire them, prosecute them, and get the family all the justice that they deserve. Go to them, say, "What else can I do?" So I don't, I'm not even going to try to address you for your humanity, because clearly you don't give a fuck, because you haven't for two years. But I don't know if you saw Gascon's Twitter yesterday or read any of the news about him. He's fucking coming for you. So like Sheila said, do it yourself, or we'll just keep doing it for you. It will be done, so just do it. I yield my time.
Mayor, moving on to the next caller. Kat B., you are now unmuted. Can you please state what agenda item you're calling on?
General Public Comment.
Thank you, your one minute starts now.
I mean, it's incredibly on-brand that two years after Christopher DeAndre Mitchell was murdered by Officers Anthony Chavez and Matthew Concanon, and y'all have done absolutely nothing about it, that you're now wanting to defy COVID stay-at-home orders when COVID is disproportionately killing Black and Brown people. It's so, can you make it more obvious that you don't give a flying fuck about Black people and people of color? You provide no justice for a grieving family of a young Black man who was murdered by your city's law enforcement, and now you're willing to further endanger the lives of Black and Brown people in your city. Provide financial assistance to small businesses. You could provide financial assistance to renters. You could cancel rent, cancel mortgages. You could defund your fucking police department and give that money to people who-
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because her time was up. Moving on to the next caller. Dorothy P., you are now unmuted. Can you please state what agenda item you're calling on?
Oral Communication.
Thank you, your one minute starts now.
Hi, I don't have a lot of energy to give you guys this week. It's been almost two years since we've been calling in, almost two years since Christopher was murdered by your police department. Um, it's been almost two years since you've been calling in, almost two years since Christopher was murdered by your police department. Um, I just wanna uplift the, um, demands that you fire Concanon and Chavez and also Chris and the Oversight Committee. Um, I can't believe that you guys have put Sherilyn through this. Like, it's despicable. And I keep thinking about the first meeting I ever went to when you guys started it with honoring Martin Luther King Jr. And what a fucking joke that is. Like, what a joke. You have no right to honor black freedom fighters ever. And I just can't believe that this is the level that you give care to human life. It's gross. I'm hanging up.
Mayor, moving on to the next caller. Erin S., you are now unmuted. Can you please state what agenda item you're calling on? Thank you. One minute starts now.
Yeah, I understand when you're like, oh, these artists got you. But do you realize a bunch of people come to work in Torrance from other cities? Like from lower, from working class cities that and you're gonna open things up and you're gonna okay, this is not, this is a really terrible decision, especially from one of their council members who believes between December sixth, COVID-induced communism, hashtag wake up. Are you kidding me? Like, there, there has never been communism in United States. You're saying that COVID is causing all this? If you're so worried about small businesses, then like cancel rent. If you're so worried about renters.
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because her time was up. Moving on to the next caller. Mary Ann D., you are now unmuted. Can you state what agenda item you're calling on?
Oral communications.
Thank you. One minute starts now.
Yeah, I would like to reflect, um, the two sheet comments from last week, his closing comments, um, replacing businesses for, um, black folks and people of color. I think it's important this body hear it. People of color are dying every day. We have to fight the system and do more than letters and emails and pats on the back. We have to continue to fight for people of color and black folks. We are, I, I'm disappointed that we aren't showing up, showing enough guts to fight for our residents. People are losing everything. They're, they're shutting down and dying every day. Some of them are our friends and we go to places and they are no longer there. Christopher Deandre Mitchell's life mattered, Black Lives Matter. Fire Matthew Concanon and Anthony Chavez. Make sure to set up a civilian oversight commission. We're not going anywhere and we're fighting the system.
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because her time was up. Moving on to the next caller. Carol G., you are now unmuted. Can you please state what agenda item you're calling on?
Oral.
Thank you. One minute starts now.
Hi, Carol Gillis with the Torrance Theater Company. We've had a great run of play-at-home series. Everyone's been able to come online to watch these wonderful plays. Our actors are awesome. And we have our last two plays coming up. Uh, this Sunday, December thirteenth at six PM, we'll be driving Miss Daisy. And I'm sure many of you under, have seen the movie and it'll be in, it'll be fun to watch the play. Uh, there will be an encore performance on Saturday, December nineteenth. And then the last play in our series for the twenty-twenty ser- ti- series year is A Christmas Carol. It's a live radio play. That'll be on Sunday, December twentieth at six PM. And then the encore performance will be on Thursday, December twenty-fourth. Now, the encores are on twenty-four hours on demand. And by the way, last Sat- Sunday's play, Beyond Glory, was absolutely wonderful. And there is an encore performance this Saturday, December twelfth for twenty-four hours. So go to thetorrancetheatercompany.com forward slash playat-
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because her time was up. Moving on to the next caller. BCB, you are now unmuted. Can you please state what agenda item you're calling on?
Nine A. This, uh, shutdown.
Thank you. One minute starts now.
Yeah, I'm calling about the, uh, nine A and the COVID shutdown. Uh, City of Torrance is a great place and, uh, we need to put our restaurants, open them back up so people can go eat. The people who own these businesses, they're losing their lives. Uh, Manhattan Beach has got a thing where they can take out food and still sit outside and eat. We need to do at least that much to keep our businesses open for our people. As far as the COVID's concerned, this has gotta stop here. Torrance has gotta step up, you know, and as far as Torrance PD is concerned, I love them guys. God bless our police department. They're doing a wonderful job. You know, um, we need to get our, our city back to work, get our kids back to school. Very, very important to get our kids back to school. You know, this mask thing, the whole COVID stuff needs to be changed. They tried this before, it didn't work. We need to find something different. Locking people up at home and making them stay home is wrong.
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because his time was up. Moving on to the next caller. Cindy A., you are now unmuted. Can you please state what agenda item you're calling on?
Oral comments.
Thank you. One minute starts now.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I would just like to call and reiterate what the previous, uh, caller talked about. Today, a ruling was made in which the city of LA, um, by a judge was deemed that the ruling for the restaurants was not, um, there was no support for it. We need to be like Manhattan Beach and open up and be creative and outsmart LA. We cannot allow ourselves to be dependent on them. Let us, let's work together and let's get our businesses working. Let's utilize that space and help our businesses to survive. They will not make it through this next shutdown and we have to be smarter because the state is gonna try to keep us closed. But let's do what Manhattan Beach is do- doing and try to get our restaurants open. We can get them going. We appreciate your time. We appreciate our police. They're doing a great job protecting us and thank you for doing it. And just ignore this nonsense from all these other people that are calling in because they have no worth. Thank you.
Mayor, moving on to the next caller. BJ Johnson, you are now unmuted. Can you please state what agenda item you're calling on? BJ Johnson, are you still on the line? BJ Johnson, are you still on the line? Moving on to the next caller, Mayor. Ilene, Ilene J., you are now unmuted. Can you please state what agenda item you're calling on?
Oral comments.
Thank you. One minute starts now.
Uh, I'm calling in support of the demands, um, that the, that Christopher Deandre's family has made to fire the officers who took his life and to create a civilian oversight committee. Um, this is common sense, um, policing. When, you know, this is common sense justice. Look at the harm that has been done. Ask the victims what, um, what, what, uh, justice looks like for them. The family has clearly spoken, um, and it's a damn shame that you do not honor, um, their demands, their requests. And you do have a district attorney who fortunately for the many victims of police brutality understands how to, um, you know, how to actually work in the case of victims and
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because her time was up. Moving on to the next caller. Dan S., you are now unmuted. Can you please state what agenda item you're calling on?
Nine A and oral communications.
Thank you. Your two minutes starts now.
So I'm gonna start off with nine A. I'm just going to let all of you know that we wouldn't be having to discuss this if we had all been wearing our masks at the beginning and social distancing, staying at home. But no, you guys decided to go out and basically just ruin it for the rest of us. So this is all your fault. Just remember that. And basically, a lot of people from other communities, like, like other cities that are close to Torrance that are people of color that have to come in and work. So we have to protect their lives. Restaurants are not the priority right now. If you wanna support your restaurant, okay, shop local and give a big tip. And about general comments, I would like to express my support for Christopher Deandre Mitchell. Basically, I'm not sure how else you guys can see this, but imagine if that was your child. Imagine if they got shot because they were scared of the police. I mean, if you respect the police, that's fine. Okay, that's, you're right. You have every right to do that. However, you need to get these really bad cops who represent you guys so badly. You guys need them out of your police department. You need them to be prosecuted. We need to arrest Matthew Concanon and Anthony Chavez and establish a civilian oversight commission. And about Aurelio Matucci, your Blue Lives Matter flag, are you serious? You say you love America. I, no, I call BS. According to the flag code, the flag should never have place on it nor on any part of it nor attached to it any mark, insignia, letter, word, figure, design, picture, or drawing of any nature. So by you having your Blue Lives Matter flag, no, you're not patriotic. You're against this country. But is that a surprise to any of us? You're an embarrassment. I yield my time.
Mayor, moving on to the next caller. Eli R., you are now unmuted. Can you please state what agenda item you're calling on?
Yeah, um, nine A and general comment.
Thank you. Your two minutes starts now.
Okay, um, on nine A, I think, um, we should comply with the regional order from the state government that is to close outdoor dining. I know, uh, the county was preemptive, um, about a week and a half early, um, to the state's mandate. But, um, as the judge said in the case, they still have to comply with outdoor dining based on the governor's, um, requirement. And my general comment is that we should have, um, a civilian oversight commission created. Um, as everyone's been saying, two years ago, they had, uh, the grand jury in LA say that that's something we needed to do. Um, and I wanted to comment on Matucci's little thin blue line flag that he said is in support of police. Um, where this thin blue line actually came from was Chief Parker of the LAPD. He coined this phrase after Bloody Christmas where the police beat seven Latino prisoners. And so he made this Thin Blue Line TV show to try to increase PR. And then later in his tenure, Rodney King was beat by his cops under his watch and that caused the nineteen sixty-five Watts riots. Um, and then he also said, "It is estimated that by nineteen seventy, forty-five percent of the metropolitan area of Los Angeles will be black. If you want any protection for your home and family, you're going to have to get in and support a strong police department. If you don't, if you don't come nineteen seventy, God help you." He also said about Latinos, "They're not being too far removed from the wild tribes of the inner mountains of Mexico." So I hope you see that this thin blue line rhetoric is actually very racist. That's all. Bye.
Mayor, moving on to the next caller. Steve S., you are now unmuted. Can you please state what agenda item you're calling on? Steve S., are you still on the phone?
Uh, yeah.
What agenda are you calling on, sir?
Uh, open comment.
Thank you. One minute starts now.
Yeah, yeah, these, uh, these people calling in about that piece of shit Christopher Deandre Mitchell gives us all a bad name. That motherfucker was driving around with a car. His piece of shit mother didn't raise him properly. Stephanie turned on the peep- cheap-ass radio. Stan, you're a person of color, you can tell it. You need to learn what you're talking about. This guy was driving around with a gun. He's driving around old Torrance with a gun. He could have killed anybody. That CDM is a piece of shit and his family's a piece of shit. They raised him that way. Andy Porkchop, get off Torrance Fire Department. You got better things to do and learn. Learn to follow the rules of the road while you're driving. Julia and Machio, you guys are aw- awful. You don't know what you're talking about. You have no idea what you're talking about. Same with Jay Lay. You guys don't know anything. This guy's driving around with a gun, stealing cars. He could have killed your family. Yield my time.
Mayor, moving on to the next caller. Gina V., you are now unmuted. Can you please state what agenda item you're calling on?
Oral communications.
Thank you. One minute starts now.
Oh, that was quite an act to follow. But very representative of the city of Torrance, that last gentleman. What's up, colonizers? So you are celebrating settler colonialism in your meeting today. How fitting, how fitting. And I actually think it's very appropriate that, I haven't even seen it, but that there's a Blue Lives Matter flag behind one of your councilmen. Like, that's it. Show who you are. Show it. You might as well just start wearing your Klan robes. I swear to God. Just start wearing your Klan robes to the meeting. Because that's who you are. You clearly are there to support and uphold white supremacy by any means necessary. Institutional racism is alive and well in the city of Torrance and you will do anything to support it. And it does not surprise me that the folks calling in
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because her time was up. Moving on to the next caller. Carol Lynn, you are now unmuted. Can you please state what agenda item you're calling on?
Oral communication.
Thank you. One minute starts now.
It's been two years tomorrow, but I live daily like it just happened. You get that dreadful phone call. They try to identify you, your son by the tattoo of my name on his face. You can't verify him. You can't see him until the funeral. It hurts. That's what the enemy do. He comes to rob, steal and kill. But they stole my son's future. They stole his life and they destroyed me and the rest of my family. Christopher is my only son. He was the best part of me. I miss him so much and it hurts me and I'm so upset that nobody cares. Nobody, it's just okay. It's okay. Because I'm gonna keep on fighting for my son's justice and everybody
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because her time was up. Moving on to the next caller. Michael H., you are now unmuted. Can you please state what agenda item you're calling on?
General comments.
Thank you. One minute starts now.
There's a, there's a special, there's a special place in hell for people who cannot find empathy with Christopher Deandre Mitchell's family. There's a, there's a special place in hell. One in one thousand people have, uh, black people have died from COVID. I've been wondering if one in one thousand white people have had COVID. Like, would y'all actually give a fuck? But to my main, thank you Sherilyn for sharing that. We love you. We care. There are no, there, uh, on, on this day, uh, you know, as, uh, coming up, you know, remark, remarking the two-year mark of the murder of Christopher. And, uh, we wanna honor his life and it's only by calling in demands of justice in his name. And, uh, we will continue to uplift, uh, and demand to create a civilian oversight commission and fire the officers responsible for the murder of Christopher Deandre Mitchell, uh, and the officers Anthony Chavez and, uh, Matthew Concanon. Um, and in the
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because his time was up. Moving on to the next caller. Porkchop, you are now unmuted. Can you please state what agenda item you're calling on?
Hi, hello, I would like to speak on, uh, eight F. I would like to speak on nine A and, uh, oral communication.
Thank you, sir. Your three minutes starts now.
Thank you, Kelly. First of all, I'd like to talk about the financial, uh, finance report. And, uh, uh, six months ago, it was hundred thirty-six million dollars. Now it's eighty-six million dollars. It's like in six months, the pedal dropped. We lost, uh, fifty million dollars. And the Torrance Fire Department should get a, uh, report of this so that And the Torrance Fire Department should get a, uh, report of this so that everybody else, all the city workers, because the Tor- Torrance firefighters gallivanting and wasting time and money. In Redondo Beach, they're spending their money at the Redondo Beach businesses and patrolling the Redondo Beach and, uh, every county beach area. Also, the Torrance police officers were at the Holiday, Holiday Life District making overtime money, standing in a dark trailer. Motorcycle officers, bicycle officers, cruisers, they are standing in a trailer at Robert Road. If you don't believe me, come Friday, Saturday, and Sunday and check it out what they do. Hiding in a freaking trailer in the dark. Okay, COVID nineteen. It's not all your fault, but because you have to follow this order. But we are back on zero. We are back on zero. Except the worst end, because in March, we don't have to cover our faces. Now we have to cover our faces. And, you know, Fury is preaching this like a priest and doing something else. He says, "Don't, don't go outside. Stay at home." This sense, and he's gonna say bye-bye or goodbye to that art director in person. Oh, that's what we need. All right. About, uh, free comments. This week also, the cops were called on me for absolutely nothing to documenting your heroes. Your heroes who called police on a citizen who documenting the wasting of taxpayers' dollars. They are fifty million dollars less than, uh, six months ago and these beaches going to cities all over the place. Watch my videos. Andy Porkchop, YouTube. You can see what they do with our six-dollar money. They wasting the taxpayers' money. Everybody is crying. Everybody losing their house, losing their job. And these motherfuckers are bathing in milk and honey. Going to the beach, going to gallivanting all over town. Watch my videos. Andy Porkchop, it's all there. And contest to the people. We are short of fifty million dollars. Explain it. How the fuck? Fuck them. You don't have money and these guys wasting-
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because his time was up. Moving on to the next caller. Emily H., you are now unmuted. Can you please state what agenda item you're calling on?
Oral communication.
Thank you. Your one minute starts now.
I'm calling in solidarity, as always, with Christopher DeAndre Mitchell's family and to uphold BLM's demands that you fire Anthony Chavez and Matthew Concanon and create a civilian oversight commission. We are so sick of your murderous police departments. They need to be checked. We're watching you. We've been watching you. We've made our demands very clear. And you and your racist supporters that call in, even if they are police officers in disguise, are not going to scare us. Like a previous caller said, "I'm not even gonna try to appeal to your humanity." You can't even let Cheryl Lynn grieve and speak for more than sixty seconds after you have murdered her son. You've made it clear that you have no hearts and souls. But you'd think that the arrogant asses that you are would care more about looking good. Because when we fight, we win. It's been two years. We're gonna win this fight, just like all the others. LA County is going to see you for the racist you are. And Fury, show your fucking-
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because her time was up. Moving on to the next caller. Jen R., you are now unmuted. Can you please state what agenda item you're calling on?
General comments.
Thank you. One minute starts now.
I just, I need to say that I am stunned and I'm disgusted by the lack of intelligence and the profanity I've heard from callers tonight. And I'm just sorry that you're subjected to actually listening to this. Two years ago, Christopher Mitchell made a decision to steal a car and drive with a gun in it. Those are choices that he made and those choices had the consequences. The majority of the city of Torrance support our Torrance Police Department. And we think that instead of defunding the PD, we need to increase the funding for the PD. Thank you and have a good night.
Mayor, moving on to the next caller. Sandy L., you are now unmuted. Can you please state what agenda item you're calling on?
General comments.
Thank you. Your one minute starts now.
Um, I just want to say I agree with the lady before me. Christopher was a thug and des- and deserved what he got. And I don't understand why you are even listening to these people. Every week, they call in and they say the same thing. We support our Torrance PD and I hope that you do as well. I hope that you back those two officers. Because he did it himself. Nobody else did it for him. Another thing I wanted to say, one more thing, is let's, let's get these businesses open. People need to work. They're losing their jobs. They're losing their money. They're, um, even nail salons, hair salons. I mean, these are people that own these private businesses. Let's get them open and back to work. That's all I have to say. Thank you. Back to blue. Thank you. Quit listening to these people every week about Christopher, please.
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because her time was up. Moving on to the next caller. Carolina P., you are now unmuted. Can you please state what agenda item you're calling on? Carolina P., are you still on the line?
Hello, yes, I'm still on the line. I'm calling for general comments.
Thank you. One minute starts now.
Uh, the reason I'm calling is just to uplift, uplift the family's, uh, demands. The family of Christopher DeAndre Mitchell lost their son, uh, almost two years ago. It'll be his two-year anniversary tomorrow. It's been two years that his family has been without their loved one for not, no good reason. Um, the fact that you have callers justifying his murder is absolutely ridiculous. And you should be ashamed of flying that Blue Lives Matter flag because that is the most racist thing you can do. It's a slap in the face to, to the black community and every single person that has ever gone through, uh, a case of police brutality where they've lost a loved one. That Anthony Chavez and Matthew Concanon, and that you establish a civilian oversight commission to-
I'm in now.
...the police's brutality.
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because her time was up. Moving on to the next caller. David E., you are now unmuted. Can you please state what agenda item you're calling on?
Uh, yeah, nine A and seven.
Thank you. Uh, your two minutes starts now.
Okay, thank you. Hi, everyone. This is David. Uh, so, um, uh, one of the things that I've seen with regards to the COVID, uh, messaging is that, um, the message is continually stay at home. And I think that can be a little bit confusing for some folks. Um, really, the, the highest, uh, place that you can have a, a viral load concentrate is actually at home. So at home, it's probably a good idea, uh, when you're with folks, um, to avoid, uh, shared space. Um, as much as possible, try to stay in separate rooms. Um, if you want to get together as a family or what have you, it's, it's actually better outdoors. Um, there's better ventilation and it's less likely than aerosolized, uh, viral load will, um, create a high concentration. And typically, people sleep and, uh, stay long periods in, inside the home. And that's a very long period of time. It's a long duration and that viral load accumulates with every breath that a person takes. So it's actually better to, um, ventilate shared spaces and minimize the duration within, uh, those shared spaces within the home. And most spread has been shown to actually occur within the home. So, uh, there are also, uh, studies that have shown, uh, there's, there's just so many studies that have shown this. But there's a database by Glenn Knight and colleagues at the Le- London School of Hygiene and Tropical Medicine. Shows that ninety-four percent of COVID nineteen super-spreading events occurred in limited ventilation areas. It, uh, it turns out that, uh, uh, fourteen ninety-three of fifteen seventy-six, um, you know, uh, were indoor. So, uh, over ninety-four percent-
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because his time was up. Moving on to the next caller. William A., you are now unmuted. Can you please state what agenda item you're calling on?
Oral communication and nine A and COVID recovery resolution.
Thank you. Your two minutes starts now.
Good evening, Mayor Fury and City Council. So, I'd like to first start by acknowledging all of your efforts to serve the community. Uh, clearly, it's not always easy and very much appreciated. Um, also, I really appreciate that you guys turned on your cameras. Uh, that's, that's, uh, that's, that's really nice. Um, for Council member, Matucci, um, I actually have the greatest respect for what you do. And like you, I support our local police. I really do. Um, and, and, and yet, I believe that a decision of, uh, to have a blue flag behind you is counterintuitive to the eleven thousand two hundred and thirty-plus voters that afforded you the position which carries great responsibility. So it's not about BLM because I don't affiliate with any one group, yet I find it distracting to all Torrance residents that are attempting to get through and express concerns not related to BLM. Um, and, uh, wow, there's, there's a lot of comments, uh, regarding the, the, uh, what, what actually, um, is killing the black and brown community, but there's a lot of other data here. So anyways, Andy Porkchop, appreciate you keeping the city honest with your videos. It's, uh, somewhat entertaining. Regarding the nine A COVID recovery resolution, so I totally support any recovery resolution for you guys, uh, that you guys are doing on the restaurants, businesses, especially the many breweries. I am totally local Torrance, everything Torrance, so, uh, anything you guys can do for those folks, I appreciate it. I respectfully disagree, um, with the folks calling in expressing otherwise. Uh, because if you follow the numbers, it, you know, the council don't justify any band-aiding, um, unclosures, so. Uh, and I read the supplemental number two and it breaks my heart to hear, um, about the other side effects and the future of, uh, the future of Torrance, which are the-
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because his time was up. Moving on to the next caller. David K., you are now unmuted. Can you please state what agenda item you're calling on?
Yes, I'm calling on item seven, oral communication.
Thank you. Your two minutes starts now.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I hope you are having a pleasant evening. Um, certainly, there is a significant amount of vitriol. Perhaps some of it deserves. Um, I am calling, of course, because I do believe strongly, um, that we, uh, as members of a community need to demand better of our police departments. We need to find ways to de-escalate situations, uh, that do not involve, uh, murdering our constituents. We need to find ways, um, to prevent police officers with criminal backgrounds or who have in the past, uh, committed violent acts from continuing to serve our communities. So I am calling in support of Christopher DeAndre Mitchell and his poor family who have suffered, um, because a police officer within a dramatically short amount of time, uh, elected to kill him. And I, I simply don't understand how we, uh, in the first instance, do not-
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because his time was up. Moving on to the next caller. BJ Johnson, you are now unmuted. Can you please state what agenda item you're calling on?
Uh, six A, nine A and public comment.
Thank you. Your three minutes starts now.
Let me start by saying, "Black Lives Matter. Defund the police and reimagine public safety." My name is BJ and I'm a concerned Angelino calling in solidarity with the family of Christopher DeAndre Mitchell and demanding accountability for the slang of Christopher. I support Ms. Cheryl Lynn in demanding justice for her son because you clowns in front of me and especially Matucci with that white supremacist flag don't have the heart, soul, or personal fortitude to do so. On six A, it's crazy that you would take the time to memorialize the contributions of some people like David Wolfram but won't remedy the injustice that stole Christopher DeAndre Mitchell from his family and his community. Regarding nine A, it's interesting that this community is considering disobeying clear directives from governmental superiors that are clearly more concerned about the community. Oh, wait, didn't the grand jury, the Tor- didn't the grand jury in twenty eighteen rule that Torrance was supposed to create a civilian oversight committee of the Torrance Police Department? That is why I support the creation of a civilian oversight committee for Torrance Police Department to this day. Additionally, fire officers Anthony Chavez and Matthew Concanon. Why has there been so much inaction regarding the execution of Christopher almost two years ago? What would each of you do if that was your child, your friend, your loved one? It makes me question what message this commission is sending to the community regarding the worth and dignity of black lives in Torrance. During the smug silence of these bureaucrats, week after week, solidifies each of you as spineless, cowardly cons and outdated system that people will continue to vote and organize against. But you know what? As the great ancestor Bob Marley said, "If you are the big tree, then we are the small ax. Sharpened to chop you down, we shall, ready to cut you down." And let me be clear, I mean that we recognize the spiritual war you and the group of white supremacist flunkies known as the Torrance Police Department are waging against black lives in Torrance. Black Lives Matter LA is here because it is our duty to fight for freedom. We will continue to vote and organize as we cut away the spiritual barriers that make you and the Torrance community think that such appalling silence and bitch-assness is tolerable from those elected as leaders. Now to quote another one of the great ancestors, Kwame Ture, "Truth never quivers before lies. On the contrary, the truth crushes lies without pity and without mercy." So I'm gonna speak plainly. Each of you is at least a liberal white supremacist. Your silence inaction and outright resistance to change regarding the execution of Christopher echoes the message loudly to the communities throughout California. With almost two years of time, you continue to fail with the spiritual duty you were unjustly handed. Further, it's disgusting that the public has to look at Matucci's support, domestic terrorism embodied of a choice of flag, yet still ponder how someone with the face of a spoiled tomato can remain employed. Truthfully, for Christmas, I'm wishing that you get chased by a pack of vicious German shepherds out of your homes and into the fiery hell where-
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because his time was up. At this time, there's two minutes left in the public comment period. Moving on to the next caller. Jason B., you are now unmuted. Can you please state what agenda item you're calling on?
Public comment.
Thank you. Your one minute starts now.
Well, uh, unfortunate that I had to follow up that, uh, great, um, response from BJ because that was, uh, that echoes my sentiments and so many others so well. Us as members of a community, us as members of a society that have for so long built a wall around people saying that your voice does not matter, your lives do not matter. We need to start questioning, why is it that we continue to let this happen over and over and over again? Years ago, we tried to implement systems to help us as a society and as the people in that society to try to fix these problems and to try to have an open form of communication with our public officials. It failed. We have tried over and over and over again to fix it.
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because his time was up. Would you like to take another caller?
I believe the time has expired.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Time to move on with the agenda. Thank you. All right, the oral communication has ended because the time ran out. We move on with the agenda. The next item will be, uh, ten hearings. Now is the time and the place for a public hearing on Agenda Item Ten A. A recommendation of the Public Works Director that the City Council conduct a public hearing to take testimony from interested persons as well as parcel owners in the proposed undergrounding utility assessment district number twenty twenty dash one, Paseo de la Playa. And open and tabulate submitted ballots for the formation of the district. And if sufficient affirmative ballots are received, adopt resolution approving the final engineer's report forming the district and ordering the undergrounding improvements. Following the close of the public hearing, staff will open the ballots on camera and read each vote aloud. We will then take a short ten-minute recess to allow the city clerk to verify the results. We will then take a short ten-minute recess to allow the city clerk to verify the results. Has this matter been properly advertised?
Yes, Your Honor, have...
Is there a staff presentation?
Uh, yes, Your Honor. Honorable Mayor and City Council, good evening. Shin Furukawa from Public Works. I'll be making a brief presentation of seven slides to provide an overview of the material contained in the staff report. Item Ten A is a public hearing to receive testimony concerning proposed utility undergrounding assessment district number twenty twenty dash one for Paseo de la Playa. This item is a follow-up to the actions taken by City Council at the October sixth council meeting, where the City Council adopted a resolution of intention and authorized a commencement of the Proposition Two Eighteen balloting process. Next slide, please. The project team consists of Assessment Engineer Jeff Cooper of NV Five, Bond Counsel Scott Ferguson of Jones Hall, along with Stacy Hanson, and Municipal Advisor Craig Hill of NHA Advisors, as well as city staff. And all the consultants are on the call tonight for any questions. Next slide, please. The next few slides are a brief review of the district and the formation process. The proposed district includes twenty parcels on the west side of Paseo de la Playa. The property owners desire to underground existing overhead lines belonging to Southern California Edison, Charter Communications, and Frontier Communications, which run behind their homes. Next slide, please. District formation. The district formation is a resident initiated process. This is not something the city is imposing upon the property owners. The city's district formation process requires no city funds. The property owners in the proposed district pay all upfront costs prior to the formation of the district, and all costs incurred after district formation are recovered through assessments. A Proposition Two Eighteen vote or the parcel owners within the proposed district must pass to form the district. Passage requires a simple majority of the weighted ballots cast. Next slide, please. The proposed assessments. An Assessment Engineer's Report determining the proposed assessment amounts was approved by the City Council on October sixth. The assessments are based on an estimated total project cost of one million, seven hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred dollars, using estimates received from utility companies, plus a twenty percent contingency. The proposed assessments for this district range from eighty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars to ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars, with an average assessment of eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. The assessments are apportioned based on parcel area, aesthetic benefit, safety benefit, and connection benefit. The assessments can be paid either by cash upfront or over twenty years as part of the property tax bill. Next slide, please. For tonight's actions, first, conduct a public hearing to receive any public testimony on the matter. Second, upon closing the public hearing, the Assessment Engineer will publicly open and announce each ballot on camera. After all the ballots have been opened, there will be a brief recess to allow the tab- the ballots to be verified and tabulated. Finally, if the majority of the weighted ballots are in favor, adopt a resolution approving the final engineer's report, form the assessment district, and order the undergrounding improvements. Next slide, please. This last slide shows the next steps in the process, assuming the district is formed. So, tonight, we're conducting the public hearing and opening the ballots, and if suc- if successful, the district is formed. Following the district formation, uh, an assessment notice is sent out to the properties, and a sixty-day cash collection period begins for those property owners who wish to pay the assessment upfront instead of on their tax bills. Once the sixty-day cash collection period has ended, the design by the utility companies begins. Once the designs are completed, the project will be bid, and at that point, once we have a firm number on the construction cost, we'll issue the bonds. Once those bonds are issued, construction begins, and once the, the lines are underground, the homeowners are responsible for, uh, utility conversions on their individual services. And finally, once that's done, the polls are removed. So that's the overview of the process moving forward, and that concludes my presentation, and the project team is available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Uh, are there any questions by the council? Okay, uh, we will now take public comment on this hearing. There will be a designated thirty-minute time period dedicated to this matter. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak. If any members of the public wish to speak on this matter, please call the public comment hotline now at three one zero, six one eight, two four zero four. City Council Rules and Orders, Section Six Point Four E, provides that speakers can only speak once. Any speaker that attempts to speak a second time on any item will be disconnected. If you are not speaking on topic, or we cannot tell if you are speaking on topic, you will get a warning to stay on topic. If you do not then speak on the topic, or if you go off-topic once again, you forfeit the remainder of your time, and we will move on to the next caller pursuant to City Council Rules and Orders, Section Six Point Five and Section Six Point Seven, D Three and D Four. If there are no speakers waiting before the thirty-minute period has elapsed, we will close the public comment portion of the hearing. Before we, so, uh, call center, do we have anyone who has called in?
Mayor, there aren't any speakers for item ten A at the moment.
Okay, why don't we wait a couple minutes and see if anybody does make that call?
Thank you. Mayor, I believe that we have at least one caller coming in.
Okay.
Andy Porkchop, your two minutes begin now.
I, I would like to start, uh, portioning with people on this one. Okay, so, about this project, I like this project, and I like it when homeowners can get together and start the project, but I don't understand why it's, um, you have like twenty participants here, and, uh, I know there's a procedure, but it's not people have the money. I think the thing I just think, I'm not everybody, is it?
Because there is more than twenty residents there. I, I go there usu- usually that area, I know that area, and it would be really pretty and beautiful with those balls.
And, um, I thank in this way, in putting out this money, going, going at this project like this, you guys are just these people who do this project. I like that it's, uh, for the, for the, for the, uh, fire department, for the, uh, every few. And I don't think, I didn't, they need to have this one more.
These people who don't have the cash, they just... But me push this project through so I can enjoy the view also, so that all those residents will read that, because they, they got together, they are on the same page, they're cooking up the money, so let's go and do it. So next time I go back there, for what...
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because his time was up. At this time, I don't see any other callers on the line. Thank you.
Okay, then we'll, uh, close this portion of the public comment. And, uh, before we close the actual public hearing, I would like to check with the city clerk whether there are any last-minute ballots being submitted at City Hall.
No, Your Honor, there are not.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Councilmember Chen.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to close the public hearing.
Councilmember Goodrich seconds.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Ashcraft.
Yes.
Councilmember Chen.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Griffiths.
Yes.
Councilmember Kalani.
Yes.
Councilmember Matucci.
Yes.
Councilmember, oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Fury.
Yes.
Your Honor, that motion carried unanimously.
Okay, now we'll turn it over to staff to open and tabulate the ballots. The Assessment Engineer, Jeff Cooper of NV Five, will now publicly open and tabulate the sealed ballots. And the city clerk will confirm and announce the results after verifying the ballots. We don't have the... Nope, we still don't have any sound.
I think I hear noise.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
My, it, it just told me mute was off, so I think we're set. Okay, again, uh, I'm Jeff Cooper with NV Five, your Assessment Engineer. A real pleasure to be here tonight. Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, property owners. I will, uh, start opening the ballots and, uh, announcing each ballot individually, uh, either yes or no. And I apologize in advance, this takes a couple minutes to get each one of them out. So, this is, uh, assessment number one, and the vote is in favor, the yes vote. This is assessment number two, and it is a yes vote. I'm trying to hold these up a little higher so you can see that I have the ballot here. This is, uh, assessment number three, and it's in favor of the assessment. That's a yes. This is assessment number four, and it is a yes, a yes vote in favor of the project. This ballot number five. Assessment number five is in favor of the assessment. It's a yes. This is assessment number six, and it's a yes, in favor of the assessment. This is assessment number seven, and it's a yes, in favor of assessment. This is assessment number eight. Number eight is in favor of the assessment. It's a yes. This is assessment number nine, and it's in favor of the assessment, a yes vote. This is number, assessment number ten. Assessment number ten is in favor of the assessment. It's a yes. This is assessment number eleven. Assessment number eleven is a yes, in favor of assessment. This is assessment number twelve. It's a yes vote in favor of assessment. This is assessment number thirteen. It's a yes, in favor of assessment. This is assessment number fourteen. It's a yes, in favor of assessment. This is assessment number fifteen. It's a yes, in favor of assessment. This is assessment number sixteen. The yes vote in favor of assessment. This is assessment number seventeen. It's a yes, in favor of the assessment. This is assessment number eighteen. It's a yes, in favor of the assessment. This is our final ballot. It's number twenty. Uh, we didn't have a nineteen, uh, turned in. Number nineteen was turned in. This is assessment number 20, and it's a no vote, it opposes the assessment. And that's all about.
Okay, uh...
Now...
Now we'll take a short 10-minute recess to allow for the city clerk to verify the ballots, and then we will come back in 10 minutes. So it's 9:14 now, 9:24. Okay, we're back from our recess, and I called the meeting back to order. I'll now ask the city clerk to announce the official results.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have verified each of the ballots received, and the final tabulation is as follows. Eighty-nine point sixty-nine percent of the weighted ballots vote in favor of the assessment, and five point forty-one percent of the weighted ballots vote against the assessment.
Okay, well, since the majority of the weighted ballots received voted in favor of the assessment, the City Council can now consider staff's recommendation to adopt a resolution approving the final engineer's report, forming the assessment district, and ordering the underground improvements. Do I have a motion to concur with the recommendation of the Public Works Director? And can the city clerk provide a number and title for the resolution? Let's get the number and title first.
Your Honor, this is resolution number 2020-131. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Torrance, California, adopting the engineer's report, confirming the assessment, and ordering the work and acquisitions, and directing action with respect thereto for the proposed undergrounding utility assessment district number 2020-1, Paseo de la Playa.
Councilmember Matucci.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to concur with staff, uh, staff recommendation and adopt the resolution 2020-131.
Councilmember Goodrich. Do we have the city clerk?
Sorry, Your Honor. Councilwoman Ashcraft?
Yes.
Council, Councilmember Chen?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Griffiths?
Yes.
Councilmember Kalani?
Yes.
Councilmember Matucci?
Yes.
Mayor Fury?
Yes.
Your Honor, that motion carried unanimously.
Okay, we're now moving on to item eight, consent calendar. Do any of the councilmembers wish to pull any items listed under the consent calendar? I see no hands up, so I'll take a motion to approve the consent calendar in its entirety. Councilmember Matucci.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent calendar in its entirety.
Councilmember Chen.
Councilmember Chen will second.
City clerk?
Sorry, Your Honor, I got disconnected. That motion carried unanimously, 410A.
All right, thank you. But we are, we just had a motion on the consent calendar, motion by Councilmember Matucci, seconded by Councilmember Chen.
Okay, roll call vote, Councilmember Ashcraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Chen?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Griffiths?
Yes.
Councilmember Kalani?
Yes.
Councilmember Matucci?
Yes.
Mayor Fury?
Yes.
Your Honor, that motion carried unanimously as well.
Thank you. We're now moving on to item nine. Item 9A is from the city manager, provide COVID-19 recovery update, from Sir Shabari.
Thank you, Your Honor, this is Autumn Shabari, city manager. Item 9A is our weekly recovery update. The City of Torrance continues with our recovery efforts in compliance with the protocols issued by LA County. This week, the county of Department of Health confirmed the highest number of new COVID cases and people hospitalized with COVID-19 that LA County has ever experienced throughout the pandemic. With COVID-19 cases and hospitalization surging, Governor Newsom announced a regional stay-at-home order in California based on the regions available intensive care unit capacity. Regions where ICU capacity falls below 15% will be placed into this stay-at-home order for a period of three weeks. Southern California region, which encompasses LA County as a part of the, and has fallen below the 15% capacity, and as such, regional orders in place. As of today, LA County is at 10.3% capacity in beds. The order is effective through December 27, although it may be extended if the ICU capacity does not increase. Retail is still allowed at maximum 20% capacity. However, bars, wineries, personal services, including hair salons and barber shops are closed. Schools with waivers can stay open, along with critical infrastructure. Today, LA County reported 25 new cases for the City of Torrance, with a total reported cases of 2,352 and 77 dead citywide. Closures for in-person dining at restaurants, breweries, wineries, and bars remain in effect. Takeout, drive-thru, and delivery services are still permitted. And per Your Honor body's request, as you noticed in our item, letters were sent to Governor Newsom, LA County. We will also continue to work through the South Bay Council of Government's framework to explore the creation of a regional health district and engage in continued advocacy. And in an effort, and follow-up to last week's discussion, to boost business and promote our restaurant industry, the City of Torrance has launched Takeout Tuesdays. We are urging the community to take out on Tuesdays and share a picture and tag us by using #TorranceTakeout, the hashtag, to show your support for our local restaurants. We're going to be introducing engaging contests for the community to participate, and banners are currently in production to be placed on Prairie Avenue and also on Sparta Boulevard to promote this program. A socially distance-friendly campaign is in place, and will continue to play throughout City Cable, utilizing social media, digital signs around the city, our in-newsletter, and on TorranceCA.gov. For a list of restaurants in Torrance, please visit TorranceCA.gov/COVID19. If you are a restaurant that would like to be included, please email webmaster@torranceca.gov. On December 5, 2020, LA County Public Health launched a new program called LA County Holiday Home Test Selection. And this is a free program that allows residents to receive a free adult COVID-19 test kit. LA County will send a test kit to your address if you meet one of the following conditions. More information on this program is available on the county's website, which may be found in supplemental number one in tonight's item. And as I'm closing, Mayor, we continue to closely follow developments in the vaccine development and distribution, as City of Torrance may be a future medical point of distribution site known as our MPOG. We are also working with the Delamo Fashion Center and other partners to prepare for future COVID-19 testing and potential vaccine distributions. The health and safety of our employees, their families, and our community members continue to be the city's top priority. And I would like to thank, again, our city staff, our residents, our businesses, for their continued efforts to keep our for their continued efforts to keep our number of positive cases to a minimum. Myself, EOC Director, Fire Chief, are available for any questions you may have, your honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shaparian. Are there any questions from the council? I see none. Councilmember Goodrich?
Yes, we discussed this quite a bit last week, but just wanted to reiterate our desire to have a change in the regulations affecting us. I know that the numbers are significantly higher and trending in that direction, but from a public policy standpoint, it's my personal opinion that they're handling this incorrectly. I don't know if I mentioned it last week, but I'm worried that this complete lockdown and also eliminating outdoor activities such as outdoor dining is having a counterproductive effect by driving people inside where it's actually less safe. I guess an analogy would be if you look at the HIV and AIDS epidemic. After some time, they realized that harm reduction model, which many nonprofits use today and is considered probably best practice is the way to go. Meaning that people that were using needles, they realized that they weren't going to be able to just get them to break the addiction right away, so they practiced harm reduction by supplying clean needles. And at least that way, they have a chance of rehabilitating them before they pass away from a more dangerous virus. And so it's kind of strange that in the nonprofit world, which I'm very familiar, the model has trended in that direction. And we've learned a lot from that over the last thirty, forty years, but our public policy and the way we're handling this virus is completely opposite. It's not making a lot of sense to me. So just hope that maybe somebody out there is listening and this makes sense to them as well and maybe we can get some change in the way that we're combating this virus. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Chen, I think, was first and then followed by Councilmember Griffiths.
Thank you, mayor. And I want to thank staff for responding to some questions in the supplemental one. And I'd like to at least share some thoughts based on what's happening, based on the orders from the state. Our leadership very likely knew that the winter time came and anticipated the numbers go up. And however, unlike this, what happened back in March, there appears to be no request for the US Navy ship Mercy. There was no preemptive forward-looking plan to start working with maybe local hospitals to see if they are willing to open up floors to take non-COVID patients. So far, it appears there's no indication that any of our local hospitals, I'm just, I don't know, other hospitals did some preemptive preparation of opening up additional floors for COVID patients for surge. So and looking at some of the recent research both by Boeing and Department of Defense, it's like, I think one of the callers, Mr. Effery, mentioned earlier during orals, which is consistent that the circulation of the air is very critical. So that, so I'm not sure why the, these groups have not exercised any of those options, which would still allow a lot of the operations of the local business and restaurants. I understand that the ICU rates are going up. And really what I'm getting at is we can actually manage opening up more ICU capacity. The other area which I want to thank the staff was I read something about what Manhattan Beach has done. And this is something I would like to see, this is also in the supplement. Something that I'd like to ask for the concurrence of the council tonight to consider adopting a similar, I'm not sure what would we call this, you know, declaration of public seating area. It's in the supplemental. So this is where I am right now. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Councilmember Griffiths?
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, these changes that have been happening now with the state, changing the whole methodology of how we classify where we stand in this whole COVID nineteen world is a little bit of a mystery to me. I asked for some detail that was provided or appears to have been provided in the supplemental number one in answer to my questions about how do these ICU rates get calculated? What, how is that based on, you know, considering our territory is almost a third of the state geographically? That's a tremendous area and it's even bigger than the measure that I commented on about the size of LA County just recently. And it just seems that, again, I'm concerned that many areas that are doing well with their numbers and their hospital ICU space is good are still being punished by those areas that are having serious problems. And again, based on the judgment that was made today that there was not evidence to support shutting down restaurants as being a primary cause or source of COVID nineteen spread because there was no documentation to support that, I question a lot of the stuff that's being happening now as far as how they're classifying the justification for the shutdowns. And unfortunately, I wasn't able to get some of the links that were listed in the supplemental before the meeting today. But I would highly suspect that the Beach Cities Hospital ICU capacity is similarly low compared, or open compared to our COVID rates, which are also not increasing nearly as rapidly as the rest of the area under question by the state and also LA County. So I have a lot of questions about this new process of how they justify the lockdown. I love the creativity of our neighbors in Manhattan Beach and I'm not embarrassed to say we should copy what they've done. And I would support the motion from councilmember Chen to pass the same provision that they did to turn all the public restaurant space into public seating areas. Unfortunately, and I've talked to a lot of restaurant owners about this, it will help their takeout business tremendously, which they're allowed to do. That has not been shut down. They are allowed to continue their takeout business. But it will not help their employee situation. They will still not be able to have servers providing service to anyone seated in these areas. And I'm fine with that, partially because I just feel like takeout is really a horrible solution in a lot of cases for buying food. I'm sure we've all experienced the situation where we go out and buy what we think is going to be a nice meal and by the time we get it home, it's cold, it's stale, it's soggy. It's just not appetizing. And so on top of all the other restrictions we have, we can't enjoy decent food. And by providing seating areas throughout our public spaces that people can sit at in the wide-open spaces and enjoy their food as it's fresh out of the restaurant's takeout service, I think that that will provide good options for the public to participate in if they're comfortable. If they're not, they certainly can take their food home. And I would like to see that motion passed to copy the Manhattan Beach option for designating their restaurant space as public seating.
Mayor, this is the city manager, Autumn Shaparian. If council is interested in something of a similar nature, I would ask that you allow staff an opportunity to explore what that would entail since the layout of Torrance and given that we have some state highways may limit our ability for mimicking or copying the same circumstances of Manhattan Beach. I understand the conceptual desire, but if council wants to go in that direction, please allow us the opportunity to bring back a follow-up item for next week to give our community development staff and our city attorney's office an opportunity to explore how that would work in Torrance. Because I think our layout and circumstances are different than what Manhattan Beach has. But I understand the request. Thank you.
Councilmember Matucci?
Thank you. On that note, would it be possible for the city to lease private property? Just temporary, you know, let's say a dollar. A dollar to lease out a patio and call it, you know, city use? Because I mean, the lease technically gives you usage, legal usage of a property. So I mean, I know it's not necessarily public space, but if you lease it from a private property owner, would that be considered, you know, public use?
I'm not sure what, this is Autumn Shaparian again. Again, the liability issues may be a challenge and I'm not sure what the streets and highways code allows in regards to that concept. But that's something we can explore, councilman.
I mean, it's pretty sad that we even have to try to come up with this creative ways like many other cities have. It's pretty sad that we have to. But earlier I was speaking with councilwoman Ashcraft and I thought it would have been good if she would probably bring this up because I thought it was a great question. But I will bring it up, I guess, on her behalf if she doesn't mind, about looking into the vaccine distribution and what Torrance is doing to be part of that process. Because if we have to rely on Los Angeles County Health to figure this out for us, we may be sitting very idle for many, many months waiting for vaccines here. And being that we have two major hospitals within our city, I think it's wise to ensure that all those workers get a vaccine on the first batch. So I don't know if there's a possibility of getting, I don't know, a group together, committee, or some experts together, I don't know. Whatever we may need to do to figure out those frontline workers are taken care of.
I can address part of that for you because I have regular communications with our hospitals. And the last time I met with them, which was two weeks ago, they already have the vaccine that will be provided to them in the numbers that they need for their employees or their patients. And there may have enough for first responders. That's what the federal government is giving them. So it's not coming through LA Department of Health. It's coming from the federal government. So the distribution will be. And then as our staff pointed out, it's called a mod formula where there'll be certain models, models who will be brought in. All the CVS pharmacies and all the Walgreens across America, but they're also doing schools, school districts, municipal government. Everybody's going to be involved in getting some of those. So I think councilmember Griffiths, you brought up the thing about the hospitals here not being as impacted. Well, is Mr. Snotty on the line right now?
Chief, sir is on the line as well and he'd like to chime in, your honor.
Yeah, I think we have to hear from them, yeah.
Good evening, your honor. Councilman Matucci, to better clarify, over the last couple of years, our EOC director or coordinator, Jeffrey Snotty, has been working with Los Angeles County to be approved for an MPOD. This is before the pandemic or before COVID nineteen. And we are one of the few, if I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the only approved distribution site for this type of situation, this type of scenario. And a couple that we have, as the mayor alluded to, we do have a constant communication with Torrance Memorial. We have communicated with the, we call them the LIMSA, I'm sorry for the acronym, but that stands for our local emergency medical service agency in Los Angeles County. And they're keeping track of hospitals that have the capability of that super freezer to store the vaccine. And for us in our area in the South Bay, Torrance Memorial qualifies. They submitted an application some time ago. They're fairly confident that they should be approved for, to receive that. Our targeted date and the reports that I've seen this evening, distribution should start, or the vaccine should start arriving across the country in our area as early as next week. So we are primed here in the city of Torrance to be that lead city to distribute the vaccine. Again, we're fortunate enough to have a hospital in our jurisdiction that has that super freezer. So I'm fairly confident we'll be able to meet that mission requirement. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, you're muted, sir.
I'm sorry. Chief, do you have the information about the ICUs at our local hospitals as well? I know we don't have the numbers, but I know information was provided in our last couple of meetings. And I know this last few days we've heard some more.
Yeah, thank you, your honor. This is Martin, Fire Chief again. Just to provide an overview, and I believe councilman Chen was, expressed some items of concern as to why we were not maybe potentially prepared for an increase in cases. I can assure you, in communication with both our local hospitals, they have the capability of surging up fairly quickly. In the event there is a rapid surge, they are capable of handling it. They have a plan in place that would include ventilators as well as PPE. They report to our virtual ELC, the Slack platform that we utilize to communicate with them on a daily basis. Although we have started seeing an increase in ICU beds as well as ventilation, they haven't reached the capacity that they've shared with us. So I think we're well situated, as I just mentioned earlier, that if we continue to experience a surge here in the South Bay, I'm fairly confident based on what the leadership has shared, both that Little Company Mary and Torrance Memorial, that they should be able to manage that surge as it sits right now.
Councilmember Griffiths has a question?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. I have a question for staff, anybody who might know this. Has elected medical procedures been canceled at this stage of the restrictions?
This is Autumn. They have not, councilman. They're going to be assessed and adjustments will be made as the surge necessitates. But as of now, to my greatest knowledge, they have not.
That's different from what our original shutdown orders were, where we actually had elected procedures stopped to provide the maximum possible hospital capacity. I'd certainly rather see elective procedures stopped than to shut down all of our businesses. And the other thing that I know just from my experience of working with hospitals and so forth is that traditionally, later time is the time when hospitals experience normally the highest census due to merrily. And there are alternatives for being able to treat flu people over, as compared to a COVID patient. And it doesn't sound like I've heard any discussion about, you know, how we can address those issues in our hospitals to prioritize, so to speak, the need for the patients with the greater to prioritize, so to speak, the need for the patients with the greatest need. And I would think elective procedures would be something that we could eliminate. I think I could skip my eye job and some other things that might take up a hospital bed that are elective, and just keep a focus on what's critical. And I think that was a prudent step in our early process, and I'm not sure why they're not considering that now to give us additional medical space as opposed to just locking us all down. So, that's just additional comments from me.
Councilman, just before, you're having some breaking up within your audio.
I apologize for that. Hopefully, you got the point of my comments.
We did. You can follow up on that.
Thank you, Mayor. This is for, thank you, Mayor. This is for staff. I recall that for a while when we were getting the regular update on COVID-19. At one time, we were getting at least a number of deaths in Torrance. I think we've been at the number seventy-seven for probably at least two weeks now. And we used to have an idea if they were all in senior care nursing facility or not. And I think, I believe that maybe the county stopped providing that. Do we have any way to know of the seventy-seven deaths in Torrance as of today? That if, if percentage is from our senior care nursing facilities or not?
Councilman, this is Adam. The majority of the cases, when the data was available, were originating at senior care facilities. However, as you mentioned, over the course of the last several months, we're unable to obtain that drilled-down data. And now, it's reported by jurisdiction, by city boundary. So, you are right, we have been at seventy-seven. And if that information becomes available, definitely sure.
Yeah, if that's available, that would be great, because the last time, I think, I used to keep track on a piece of paper myself that it was, I'm going to say it was roughly ninety percent was in senior care nursing facilities of our death. Correct me if I'm wrong, that was my area of point.
We can follow up.
Right. And I just want to share this, because some people may think, you know, our discussion here, are we careless or reckless? And some of these thoughts that we're sharing. By all means, no. We value every single life in our city and our community. And just want to make sure that we're focusing the most care on where they're most accessible. And I believe I also saw a recent report, I think Chief Serna is on the line here, from our ELC coordinator, Mr. Snotty, that shows the case rate per hundred thousand since March, I believe. And underneath it, there was the death rate trend. Not to my surprise, the case rate was a positive increase in slope, but the death rate slope is actually a downward slope, inversely proportional. But I know there are sometimes arguments that, you know, if Torrance allows more outdoor activity, there may be people coming in from other cities. And based on the data that I saw on the trend, if, you know, we have one, a few casinos in the South Bay here, and I'm fairly confident that we've been getting a lot of out-of-towners from Lamita, Carson, that comes to our Costco. And we look at the local data, it has not necessarily an increased spike if we watch the trend analysis. So, some of the things that I proposed today and suggested is based on science, based on data, not just making it up on the top of my head. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? If not, we'll take a motion to accept and file. Councilmember Goodrich.
I believe we have more than a accept and file here. We have a resolution as well.
Yeah, we do.
Okay. I would like to make a motion that we...
I'm thinking the mootness of the resolution, because the resolution, basically, it does the same exact thing that we did in our letter, and it's actually been usurped by the courts as well as the state of California. But, you know, if you want to, how about we get a number and title on the resolution, and then we'll do it all at once.
Do we have a number and title?
Yes, Your Honor. This is Resolution Number 2020-132. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Torrance, California, opposing Los Angeles County Department of Public Health's decision on outdoor dining and playground closures and to support small local businesses.
I'd like to move that we accept and file the report and adopt Resolution 2020-132 with one clarification edit, and that would be in the final paragraph, insert the word "outdoor" before the word "dining."
Councilmember Chen.
Mayor, before I second that, there's a procedural. I would like to second it, but I just want to make sure that the action about following up with the request to the Manhattan Beach public seating area is included in this decision.
I thought staff said that they would be bringing it back, so we can include that in as a motion to bring back the item discussing the outdoor... I don't know how they're putting that correctly.
Outdoor public seating area.
Public space designation, Your Honor. Public designation.
Okay.
With concurrence of Councilman Goodrich with that modification, of course.
And he's shaking his head yes, so that's modified.
Okay. I will second that. Thank you.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Ashcraft.
Yes.
Councilmember Chen.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Griffiths.
Yes.
Councilmember Kalani.
Yes.
Councilmember Matucci.
Yes.
Mayor Fury.
Yes.
Your Honor, that motion carried unanimously.
All right, that takes us on to Item 9D from Public Works to approve a First Amendment to Memorandum of Understanding to Fund Beach Cities' Coordinated Integrated Monitoring Plan, from staff.
This is John Dettl, Public Works Department. This item is an amendment to an existing MOU with the Beach Cities. Sorry. It totals eight hundred and five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars over three years, and the contract will be administered by the City of Manhattan Beach, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the council? I see none. I'll take a motion. Councilmember Chen.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Chen moves to concur with staff recommendation.
Councilmember Matucci.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Chen.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Griffiths.
Yes.
Uh-oh.
I have a feeling we lost the clerk again.
She hung up, yeah.
No, I apologize, Councilmember Kalani. I didn't hear what you said. Was that no or yes?
That's a yes.
Okay.
I didn't hear you ask. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Councilmember Matucci.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashcraft.
Yes.
Mayor Fury.
Yes.
Your Honor, that motion carried unanimously.
Okay. And Madam Clerk, you had a question or an issue?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. This evening, during Item 10A, I accidentally read incorrect numbers. I spoke with the city attorney, and he stated this is a verbal scrivener's error that can be corrected on the record. The resolution does not include the numbers, so it does not need to be changed. It only includes in Section 2 that is entitled "No Majority Protest, Protest Overruled." I read eighty-nine point sixty-nine percent in favor or yes votes, and five point forty-one percent against or no votes. For the record, the correct numbers are ninety-four point thirty-one percent in favor or yes votes, and five point sixty-nine percent against or no votes. The record will be corrected to reflect the true numbers.
Okay. Well, glad we clarified that before we left tonight. It moves us down to 9C. The Metropolitan Water District of Southern California is a regional wholesale that delivers water to twenty-six member public agencies, which in turn provides water to nineteen million people in the six county region in Southern California. A thirty-eight-member Board of Directors who represents their respective member agencies governs the district. This board's structure ensures each member agency is part of the governance of the Metropolitan Water District. As a member of the Water District, our city appoints a representative to serve on the board, representing the city's interests. In August 2013, Russell LeFay was first appointed to serve as the city's MWD Director, and he was subsequently reappointed to a second term, which expires at the end of December. Pursuant to an ordinance that was adopted in 1994, the mayor appoints a director to the board with the approval of city council, and the director serves a four-year term of office. Mr. LeFay is one of the most dedicated, knowledgeable, and influential Metropolitan Directors, and he has served with distinction as the city's representative on the board. He's a member of freestanding committees and four special committees that are considering some of the most important and challenging water resource issues at the district. Mr. LeFay also serves on an ad hoc committee to select a new general manager to replace the current general manager who is retiring. Mr. LeFay is actively involved in Metropolitan's integrated resource planning efforts to enhance regional reliability and resilience.
Mayor, we lost your audio, sir.
Lost my audio?
Go back there. We just had a glitch for a moment.
Okay. Let me go back to pursuant to ordinance that was adopted in 1994. The mayor appoints a director to the board with the approval of city council, and the director serves a four-year term of office. Mr. LeFay is one of the most dedicated, knowledgeable, and influential Metropolitan Directors, and he has served with distinction as the city's representative on the board. He's a member of freestanding committees and four special committees that are considering some of the most important and challenging water resource issues at the district. Mr. LeFay also serves as an ad hoc committee to select a new general manager to replace the current general manager who is retiring. Mr. LeFay is actively involved in Metropolitan's integrated resource planning efforts to enhance regional reliability and resilience, conservation programs, and activities related to long-term financial planning. He meets regularly with city staff and attends Water Commission meetings. The district recently recognized Mr. LeFay for his recent paper on Bay Delta Conveyance, which has been placed on Metropolitan's webpage. Mr. LeFay has been carrying out his duties exceptionally well and is interested in continuing his role as a board member. At this time, I am pleased to recommend to my colleagues that the council approve of his reappointment and that we adopt a resolution to make his reappointment official. Can I have, may I have a number and title, please?
Yes, Your Honor. This is Resolution Number 2020-132. Oh, I'm sorry, Your Honor, that is incorrect. One thirty-three. It is.
Yeah, okay.
2020-133. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Torrance, California, reappointing Russell LeFay to the post as the City of Torrance representative on the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California's Board of Directors.
Councilmember Griffiths.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the appointment of Mr. LeFay as Torrance's representative to the Metropolitan Water District for a new four-year term and accept the resolution Number 2020-133.
Councilmember Goodrich. Councilmember Goodrich.
I beat you to it. Councilmember Goodrich second.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Griffiths.
Yes.
Councilmember Kalani.
Yes.
Councilmember Matucci.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashcraft.
Yes.
Councilmember Chen.
Yes.
Mayor Fury.
Yes.
Your Honor, that motion carried unanimously.
Which brings us to 9E as an edict from Community Development to accept an appropriate Department of Housing and Urban Development coronavirus aid relief and economic security, from staff.
Linda Cessna with the Community Development Department. This item is to appropriate and place into our budget some funds from the CARES Act that are specific to our Section 8 program. These monies will assist us with administrative fees, with the housing assistance payments, and we're also moving some reserve funds into our housing assistance payments budget. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, several of our tenants have lost jobs and their income has lowered, which means that the amount that they pay in rent is also lowered, which means that the amount that the city pays through the Section 8 program has been raised. The CARES fund have been designated for cities to allow us to overcome that shortfall so that we don't run out of housing assistance payments dollars, so that we can continue to make the payments on behalf of our tenants. Again, this money is specific only to the Section 8 Housing Assistance Program. We're available for any questions.
Are there any questions from the council? I see none. I'll take a motion to concur with the staff recommendation, accept an appropriate to CARES Section 8 funds. Councilmember Matucci. So moved. Councilmember Ashcraft.
I second.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Griffiths.
Yes.
Councilmember Kalani.
Yes.
Councilmember Matucci.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashcraft.
Yes.
Councilmember Chen.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Mayor Fury. Mayor Fury.
Yes. Yes.
Your Honor, that motion carried unanimously.
Mayor, this is Adam. We accept this, skip over 9D. This is Adam Chaparian.
No, I did it on purpose. I did it on purpose to make you nervous.
Well, I'm okay. Depending on time.
Yes. I actually found out when we were doing 9E that, oh, boy, we didn't do D. Okay. So, the next item will be out of alphabetical order, Item 9D from the city manager to appoint, appointment of our finance director. Mr. Chaparian.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Your Honor, Mayor, members of the city council, Adam Chaparian, city manager. Item 9D is a recommendation of the city manager that city council appoint Sheila Poisson to the position of finance director. I am pleased to recommend the appointment of our current Assistant Finance Director, Sheila Poisson, as the city's next finance director. During my short tenure as city manager, I've had the privilege to hire our community service director, John LaRocque, and now, our next finance director. Ms. Poisson was selected from a group of very qualified individuals and brings with her years of private and public sector experience. Like me, she has a very difficult job, which is to continue the legacy of our recently retired bosses. In her case, Finance Director, Mr. Eric Tapp. With Sheila, we gain experience and dedicated public servant who understands the unique challenges and opportunities facing cities in a COVID-19 and post-COVID-19 environment. I will rely on Sheila's leadership. I will rely on Sheila's leadership to build a solid finance team with focus on balanced budgets, achieving maximum operational efficiency, embracing public engagement in the development of our budget, and aligning Torrance on the long-term path of financial stability, fiscal stewardship, and building the city's reserves. Lastly, I want to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Viet Hong, Ms. Tina Ortiz, Ms. Kelsey Winter, and our entire HR team for their hard work in conducting several high-profile recruitments in such a short time. Uh, Your Honor, I am available for any questions you may have, Ms. Poisson is available as well, thank you.
Thank you, are there any questions from the council? I see none, oh, well, what we need is a motion to, uh, point. Councilmember Kalani?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, motion to appoint Ms. Sheila Poisson to the position of Director of Finance for the City of Torrance.
Councilmember Matucci?
Second.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Kalani?
Yes.
Councilmember Matucci?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashcraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Chen?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Griffiths?
Yes.
Mayor Fury?
Yes.
Your Honor, that motion carried unanimously.
All right, well, that concludes our business for this evening. Takes us down to council orals, and, uh, tonight's order starts off with, uh, Councilmember Kalani.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, I just want to share that the last few days have been a little heavy-hearted for me. Um, I've had the honor to assist, um, a lot of families, uh, through the most difficult days of their lives with the loss of loved ones, but on, uh, but I've also seen, uh, friends that have lost their livelihood due to the closures, so it's a very delicate balance. And I just want to say that, um, everyone on this council and every individual in this city cares. They care about the people, they care about the businesses, and, and I just was compelled to, to say that tonight, and I just wish everybody a very safe and peaceful holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Matucci?
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor, uh, I brought this up in the pen house, and I'd like to bring it up again, I- I really do. Do make a, a bigger effort into making it fair for people to call in on, on particular items, uh, such as the consent calendar and the administrative matters, um, I'd like for us to separate the, uh, public, uh, oral communications from the rest of the items. Um, I seriously, I- I mean, we've taken a vote in the past, uh, it's failed, I think we, I've, this is probably the third time I asked for this, but I really, really urge us to, to do that because it's become the, uh, BLM hour, you know, when we do, you know, they, they're overwhelming us, uh, with, uh, phone calls, they have every right to do that, I'm not, you know, I'm not taking away their First Amendment right to call and complain and, and call me a tomato face or whatever else, but, um, I do think we need to separate the two to make it fair for those that want to, uh, call in on the, uh, particular items, um, I've gotten messages, uh, tonight from people that were, you know, on hold for, uh, for a very long time wanting to speak on, on these items, and, uh, a lot of the people just stopped calling in because, uh, it's just gotten, it just, it's, it's out of hand, completely out of hand, so, uh, I really do think that we need to take steps to separating this, um, the oral communication, uh, in my opinion, you can, you can keep it at one minute, thirty minutes, uh, then allow people to call in on the items, I think it's very important that we, we open up that communication channel because, uh, right now, we're not hearing from our citizens, our residents, and, and businesses on these items. I'd like to hear what the public wants to, uh, speak about, I know the argument about, you know, they can send us emails, but it's just not the same, uh, people do want to talk to us, so, I hope we can consider doing that at the next meeting. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ashcraft?
All I have is, everybody stay safe, um, distance, wear your mask, and we can get through this, see you next week.
Councilmember Chen?
Thank you, Mayor, just want to ask the community to continue to be the loving and respectful community that Torrance is, and really do our best and enjoy this upcoming Christmas season, thank you.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Just, uh, wanted to urge everybody to be safe and continue to wear their mask, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Griffiths?
Thank you, Mayor, I want to make sure you can hear me because my phone cut out, and I'm not sure that it's working now, can you confirm?
Oh, yes.
You can hear me? Okay, great, thank you. Uh, first of all, I want to acknowledge, uh, the loss of a important figure in Torrance, if the information that I have is correct, I just recently heard that, uh, Dr. Owen Griffiths, uh, no relation, uh, just recently passed away, and I want to send my condolences to his wife Irene and their family, uh, for the loss of, um, of Dr. Griffiths, who was a very prominent figure in our school system and our school board, and, uh, I'd like to see if we can maybe acknowledge him, uh, uh, in our next, uh, meeting with, uh, uh, closing in his honor. Um, the, uh, other thing I wanted to bring up was, um, we've talked about this a little bit before, but one of the things that I, I really miss about not having our meetings in the council chambers is our, our electronic voting and meeting management system that handles our speaking orders and our motion-making as well as our, our vote-taking, and it's recently come to my attention, from, from talking to the city clerk and, and other staff members, that there is software that may be, allow us to be able to use that capability even in a Zoom format, and so with the concurrence of my colleagues, I'd like to have staff explore that possibility, uh, with the understanding that we may be continuing to meet in Zoom format for some time, uh, and I think that would make a tremendous, uh, benefit to our meetings if we can get back to some sense of normalcy via electronic voting and, and meeting management, and, um, uh, just to have the staff explore the capability of whether that in fact would work in our environment with Zoom and our current computer equipment, and, uh, to, to use, utilize the technology that we already have. So if I can get concurrence from staff to have, or from my colleagues, for staff to investigate that, I'd sure appreciate it. I think I got some concurrence on that, so thank, thank you also very much, and have a great and safe week, everyone. Bye-bye.
And, and one of the things I would concur on that was because I don't have to watch and see who's the first to hand up, it would be so nice to be able to see in order who came in, so I don't have to spread my eyes across the, the whole thing, and, and, and Dr. Owen Griffiths, he, uh, certainly was an icon in our community, I had the pleasure to serve with him on the Personnel Commission for a number of years for TUSD, uh, and, and in fact, uh, staff is working on getting together the information for an adjournment in his honor next week, uh, a lengthy history, he had twenty-four years on the school board, twenty years on the Personnel Commission, uh, a true icon in the community and a tremendous family, too. He will certainly be missed, and, uh, we'll have to do a good adjournment for him, make sure Irene's, uh, tuning in for that. So as our city manager mentioned in the update, I want to stress that testing does not prevent people from transmitting and acquiring the virus, and it's not a substitute for distancing from other people outside your household. Wearing face coverings over your nose and mouth, and washing and avoiding crowds remains the best practice. We are currently experiencing the result of non-compliance from the Thanksgiving holiday, and it is anticipated that this surge will continue for at least another week or two. We, the county has asked us to stay home as much as possible and wear face masks when outside, even when exercising at the beach and parks. Wearing a mask is a gift you can give this holiday, it protects those around you, your family, your friends, your coworkers, those who may be susceptible to catching this virus. All public and private gatherings and events within individuals not from the same household are prohibited, except for faith-based services and protests, and even those, people are supposed to wear their masks. Residents are still permitted to travel to and from essential businesses, work, or provide services to a healthcare operation or essential business, residents may also engage in essential activities or participate in permitted individual or household outdoor and indoor activities while practicing required distancing, infection control, and masking. Do you remember the mantra, stay in place, maintain your space, cover your face? We are asked to limit gatherings, but our local businesses and restaurants, even with these orders that are extremely taxing on them, have set up ways to protect us from exposure. Let's support them by ordering takeout and curbside pickup. I know it's tempting to order from delivery services that provide retail and food services from outside our city, but let's put our money where our heart is and buy local, support our Torrance businesses today so that they will be here with us tomorrow. Executive orders are quickly changing as we try to slow the surge to avoid crowding at our hospitals. For current information concerning COVID-nineteen, visit torncca.gov/covidnineteen. For daily updates, tune into City Cable or torncca.gov and watch live COVID-nineteen today, Monday through Thursday at four P.M., and Weekends in Torrance, which airs every Friday and Saturday and Sunday at two P.M. So just take care of yourselves and think about it, i- it's not punishment, it's trying to protect, trying to get people back to work, trying to get people, the kids to go to school, but the only way that's going to happen is if we abide by these orders right now, if we wear the mask, if we socially distance, if we don't go to gatherings, remain with your, your household, um, you know, otherwise, this is going to go on. Uh, the vaccine we were talking about earlier tonight is not for you and I, and the vaccine is for the healthcare workers, they will be the first ones. It's likely that the people watching this and the people up here will not see a vaccine until at least the third or fourth month of next year, that's for sure. It, it's just not going to be here, it's physically impossible to inoculate three-hundred-and-thirty or three-hundred-and-forty million people in that short period of time, and, you know, the best defense against the virus is covering your face and washing your, washing your hands, and minding, minding your distance, so please, try to work on that, you know, Christmas is a great time of the year, but, you know, i- it's, it takes away some of the allure if people are sick, and takes away a lot of the allure if somebody's not at the table, it takes away a lot of the allure if somebody's in the hospital during this period of time, so let's try to beat, uh, COVID by just doing the right thing. Thank you very much for listening tonight, thank you very much for tuning in, we'll see you next week for sure, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Kalani? Did you, did you get the amendment?
Yes, I did, thank you, Mayor.
All right.
Yes, I did, thank you, Mayor. Okay, motion to adjourn the city council meeting to Tuesday, December fifteenth, twenty-twenty, at five-thirty P.M. for closed session, with a city council workshop, downtown revitalization at six o'clock P.M., and with the regular meeting commencing at seven o'clock P.M., in compliance with Governor Newsom's executive order N twenty-nine-twenty, which suspended portions of the Brown Act, Governor Newsom's executive order N thirty-three-twenty, day-at-home order issued March nineteenth, twenty-twenty, and the County of Los Angeles Public Health Officers Temporary Targeted Safer-at-Home Health Order for COVID, uh, for Control of COVID-nineteen Tier One Substantial Surge Response, revised order issued November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty, that temporarily replaces and suspends the public health officers reopening Safer-at-Home and in the community of, a Community for Control of COVID-nineteen Order Blueprint for a Safer Economy Surge, I'm sorry, Tier One Surge Response, revised order issued November twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty, members of the Torrance City Council and staff will participate in this meeting via teleconference or other electronic means in, in continuing effort to practice social distancing to reduce the spread of COVID-nineteen.
Councilmember, uh, Ashcraft?
I second that motion.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Matucci?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashcraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Chen?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Griffiths?
Yes.
Councilmember Kalani?
Yes.
Mayor Fury?
Yes.
Your Honor, that motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, good night, everyone, and stay safe.